And thank you for whoever brought the cakes. Was that you, Bob? All right. Okay. Very nice. That hit the spot. Definitely hit the spot. All right. Well, first up, we have recognitions. And I will turn it over to Dave.
Yeah, thank you very much. So our first recognition tonight is for Zoe Field. We're going to invite Principal Mike Ballard and Zoe up to the table there, and we're going to recognize Zoe, who's a student at Hudson High School and been selected as recipient for the prestigious Herb Cole Excellence Scholarship. The purpose of the Herb Cole Excellence Scholarship Program is to recognize student leadership, citizenship, school and community involvement, and academic achievement. It's the goal of the Herb Cole Educational Foundation to encourage Wisconsin youth to pursue post-secondary education in a public or non-public university, college, vocational, technical college. And they award $10,000 scholarships to 100 high school seniors each year. We're obviously very proud of Zoe. It's an amazing accomplishment. I'm going to turn it over to Principal Ballard to tell us a little bit about Zoe.
Well, thanks for the introduction. I will just say. All right. So so proud of Zoe Field, and I'll share with you, we had a chance to get to know one another a little bit. We had some lunch and very, very fortunate to get to know her. Zoe is about as well-rounded of a senior in high school as I can ever imagine and certainly have ever met. She is exceedingly strong in the classroom. She has played piano since she was the age of two. She's run cross-country. She sings in choir. She she has a very strong international travel background and interest, right? Is looking to major in international business and with the possibility of attending college in Switzerland. So we are just extremely proud of Zoe. Your parents did a wonderful job of raising this young lady. And so I just asked her to share a few thoughts as she came to be recognized today.
Sorry if I take this off.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so yeah, as Mr. Ballard said, my name is Zoe Field and is this okay? My parents are Tom and Domaries Field, then I have three younger sisters, two are juniors at the high school, Mono and Celia, and then Miriam is in seventh grade. Um, I'm very excited to have received the Cole Scholarship, and I'm hoping to use it to study international relations, as Mr. Ballard said, either somewhere in the U.S. or in Switzerland. Um, as I was kind of thinking about, Mr. Ballard asked me think about maybe something that stood out about my application, and I was just considering that I think that the life experiences that I've had over the past four years have or just would have been something that stood out. Just as an example, Mr. Dornfeld really helped me. He was my counselor as a freshman, and I went to Niger in Western Africa. I spent two months at a mission hospital there, and he helped me to just make sure that I'd be back on track when I came back and that I wouldn't miss anything while I was gone. And all of my teachers were very flexible and eager to help me with that. So that's just one example of how I felt supported in my pursuits outside of the classroom as well as in the classroom. And then as a senior, Mrs. Francis, who's my current counselor, she's helped me with the application process for Geneva, which is a little bit different than in the U.S. and some challenges that I wasn't anticipating. So she's encouraged me and supported me and been excited for me, even when I was feeling kind of discouraged about it myself. So and then the same goes also for Ms. Mick, who's spent a lot of hours outside of class helping me prepare for an AP test that I kind of joined in late for, so I'm really thankful for that as well. So just overall, I felt like teachers have been really ready to go the extra mile for me. And that's been a blessing. And also over the past four years, something that's been special is just being able to form relationships with my teachers and even friendships, I'd say, and being able to learn about them and sharing about myself with them as well. Mrs. Engstrom is one teacher. I've known her since I was in sixth grade, so we go a ways back. And she's been a real support for me and for my sisters in high school and in middle school, too. Um, I think that I have done well in school over the past couple of years, but I told this to Mr. Ballard when we had lunch together. But I know that a lot of my peers work just as hard as I do and maybe just don't get the same results. So yeah, I'm just, I'm thankful to God for giving me a good mind and love of learning. And I know that I've worked hard for the scholarship, but it's not necessarily something that I deserve, and it's a gift, too. So just wanted to say that. And I wanted to thank you all as well for just working to make a school culture that I think values students as people. I know I felt that way and not just as a grade. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Well said, Zoe. We have some board members want to say some comments. Rob?
Zoe, you are eloquent and you are humble. Do we have any idea, and I guess this is a question for perhaps Dave or Mike, we, there were 100 recipients of the of the scholarship. Do we know how many students actually applied? In total?
I do not. I know the distribution among the seats in the districts, but I don't know how many applied.
Anybody else have a question or comment? Carrie?
Zoe, I would like to echo what Rob just said. You do sound very modest, but I would disagree that you aren't deserving of this. You sound like you're very accomplished, and I wish you all the best. So congratulations.
Anyone else? Again, Zoe, congratulations on your honor, but good luck with using it to your best ability. I'm sure you will, and I'm sure it's not going to be the last honor or award that you get. So good luck. Thank you. Next up is Quiz Bowl.
Yes, thank you very much. A night to be proud of Hudson High School for sure. So we're going to recognize Quiz Bowl. And Quiz Bowl is an academic competition that competes against teams from all over the country and this year all over the world. Students compete individually and in team collaboration, answering questions in areas such as literature, art, history, current events, politics, science, geography, mathematics, world cultures, athletics, music, philosophy, pop culture, and even video games. So you have to know a lot. And our Quiz Bowl team is a long history of success in Minnesota and Wisconsin. And tonight we have Roberta Noyak, teacher at the high school. Incredibly dedicated teacher, does a lot for the school district. And she's going to introduce a few of her Quiz Bowl competitors. We have obviously Principal Ballard up with us again to celebrate along with all of us. I'll turn it over first to Principal Ballard.
Yeah. Well, thank you again, Mr. Granbo. And I am not going to be very long. I just, I wanted to share a couple of things with you. First of all, this, again, this will be my first year at Hudson High School. I'm still learning a lot as we go, and I will share with you that the level of commitment and time in both time and energy is pretty, pretty amazing. I had no idea that Quiz Bowl met, you know, this from the second week after school started all the way until the very end of the school year. They meet weekly. It's a very strong commitment level for our students, and this year they were able to enjoy a few unique experiences that I'm sure Ms. Noyak will will share with you. So again, real proud of their success. I'll turn things over to Roberta.
Thank you. I took over the coaching, the coaching the Quiz Bowl program in, I think it was 2016. But I, and we've been working on developing the team expertise since then, but I really have to say, you listed a lot of the subjects that we talk about that we learned, I have to know questions about. But it's not that everybody has to know all of that. It's we, we have a team, and we really are a team. We have a group of a dozen or so that meet every single week to practice, and the way Quiz Bowl works is when we go to a competition, there's rounds where individuals have to buzz in, so they have to know the stuff themselves. But once they have that initial buzz in, we call it a toss-up, then there's a team bonuses where the team collaborates on the answers. And that's where the team gathering of all that knowledge comes in, is that they can answer the question between all of their expertises. Emily is our senior captain this year. She's been a member since her very first freshman week in the building, pretty much. She's been at every practice, except unless something like marching band interfered, and even then she worked around that most of the time whenever possible. She's been at almost every competition, but this is what a lot of our students are. They'll come and they'll practice every week, and then whenever the tournaments come around, they come into whatever ones they can. This year has been really unusual because our whole season has been virtual. We've, we've had people participating via IDL, via the Google Meet when they were IDL students, and they couldn't come to practices in the building. We've run practices that way. Our tournaments have all been on Zoom, so that's been brand new for us this year. I, one last thing I do want to mention is that Emily's the team leadership has been extraordinary in the last couple of years. She has taken us from being a bunch of individual competitors to really learning how to groom the team and get them to work together in these tournaments so that they work together as a team rather than as a bunch of really smart individuals. So I'll turn it over to Emily.
Hi there. As Dr. Noyak said, I'm Emily Dress. I am a senior, and I have been in Quiz Bowl for all four years of my high school experience. Yeah, pretty much the first week of high school, I looked up what clubs I could be in. Quiz Bowl caught my eye. And I joined up. My first practice, I sat between two seniors. Nick and Nick. They were extremely smart, and I was so intimidated. So the way Quiz Bowl questions are formatted is they start extremely difficult, so not everyone can get them, and as they go on, they get easier and easier to give people like freshman me a hope of answering a question. These seniors I was sitting next to would get them within a couple of words, and I was so intimidated. But over the course of my freshman year, I really felt like I had built a community, even with those scary seniors. And I made a lot of friendships. It was really cool, me being a tiny freshman, being able to see juniors and seniors in the hall and saying, hey, I know you, you know? And with those amazing upperclassmen, three years ago, we did qualify for Nationals. I had the privilege of going to Atlanta and experiencing the dynamic of different Quiz Bowl teams from all around the nation. It was a really cool experience. We didn't get very far, but it was a really cool experience. The next year and junior year, I got to have a little bit more of a leadership role. I was captain for a lot of tournaments just around Minnesota and Wisconsin. Um, on a particularly long road trip back, I got to tell everyone about all of these Bible stories, you know, just to like get a little extra knowledge in, you know, but um, this year was really special, not only because it's my last year at the high school and through Quiz Bowl, but because I have got to take on a much larger leadership role, which I really appreciate. I've gotten to, you know, give some of the incoming freshmen little like tips and tricks on like how to be a better player, not just using your knowledge, but knowing how to play the game. And oh, my word, I want to take a little bit more to talk about these freshmen that we have. They are not only insanely smart, but they're also insanely wise, and they know how to work together. They just need, you know, a little bit less energy there. This year with the pandemic, we have had all of the, our tournaments through Zoom, which is really great because it's a whole new dynamic. There, it's a whole new hill to overcome, a whole bunch of different experiences, which I'm very grateful for, but some people's microphones are louder than others, and it shows, but it's definitely been a great year for me to practice being a leader with a competition. I've gotten to take on things like, you know, giving little lessons about like things in science. But really, I am so proud of how far my team has come with all of these amazing underclassmen that I see in the same role that I had my freshman year. Where, you know, they're not really sure how the dynamics of high school works yet, so we're able to, we are able to provide them a community and some people that they know have their backs. And with our amazing underclassmen, we've qualified for Nationals again this year, which I'm very interested to see how Nationals works all through Zoom. I'm sure everything's going to go smoothly, as technology always does. But definitely, our teamwork this year has been amazing, and I'm very excited to see what Quiz Bowl does after I'm gone as well.
And I will also mention that our Nationals competition starts on graduation day. And our senior is participating in Nationals, so we'd be remiss if we didn't also mention that this team would not have developed as much as well as it has without the assistance of our assistant coach, who we don't have one this year, but for quite a few years prior to that was Josh Shabelski, who is no longer with the district as an English teacher. Next year, so high school social studies teacher Kristen Boers has agreed to be a consistent coach to help out.
Yes.
All right. I'll open it up to board members. Questions? Sue?
Well, congratulations. I have actually attended one Quiz Bowl some years ago in Minneapolis. So the coaches, uh, what, what, what's most helpful coming from the coaches to prepare you on how to answer questions? Is there, is there some methodology or like you look for key words or how to process to get to the answer? I'd just be curious about the process.
Yeah, I think you've named a lot of it. A big part of it is we get packets of questions from past years and just practicing every week to really get a feel for what the competitions will look like and, you know, having a little friendly competition with in our classmates. But um, Dr. Noyak has been really good at pointing out like, this is something that will come up a lot in tournaments. You should really engrain this in your brains. And I've actually just like accumulated a lot of really quirky facts just from Quiz Bowl, like I'll know that John Donne wrote some really awesome poems till the day I die now. I'm sorry, I can't name any in specific, but I promise you they're really good. Yeah, the Holy Sonnets. I knew that all along. But yeah, just pointing out those keywords and just practice, 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 you know, always makes perfect.
She says that, but if the word the flea came up on a question, she'd be right on the buzzer and know it was John Donne immediately. We practice keywords a lot as we're reading.
Yes.
All right. Other comments or questions? Bob?
Yeah, just congratulations. Wonderful, wonderful to hear your experience, and I think it's so great to hear your, about the relationships you built as a, as a freshman coming in and your effects, and yet you're having on that same relationships with the freshmen there at town. So it's just great to hear that. It's such a big deal in, in a high school the size of ours.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, Heather?
The one thing I heard you say that excited me the most, and I hope I'm not engaging in optimistic listening, but when you talk about collective wisdom. You know, I think that's, it's especially, and it's not just energetic ninth graders, it's as adults, you know, we often think we know the answer. And I know there are different scenarios, we all, I think about the one about the airplane crash in the Himalayas and which of these five things would you, and you think you have a really good answer, and then you hear everyone else's rationale, and together you come up with a better answer. And so to the extent that you've seen that, but also that you've helped impart that that value on the rest of your teammates while you're in a leadership role. Kudos to you because that serves us all better, both yes, in competition, but just in society and in the world of ours. So thanks for that.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I just want to congratulate you on your four years on Quiz Bowl. It's great to see somebody, you know, stick with something all four years. I know that it happens like in athletics. There might be 50 young men out for freshman basketball, and by the time they get to be seniors, there's two or three left on the team, but that's the thing with Quiz Bowl. It's something you can actually get better at as you go on. So I like the aspect of the team to build on what Heather said. It's a little bit different than, say, a geography bee or a spelling bee where it's you against the rest of the people. But when it's a team concept, we try to teach those things, and it's putting, it's more than just knowledge, too. We, Hudson's had National Merit Scholars. Now we have a Herb Cole Scholar. And but it's not always necessarily knowing the answer, but knowing how to play the game and then share that knowledge with your team and make the team better. So good job with your leadership. Good luck at Nationals.
Thank you.
And thank you. Next up. We still have one more recognition. And I don't know, we were gonna do these together, I guess, and, you know, get this done. So we have two two people who have put a lot of time and effort into our district, and we're recognizing their service on this school board, Sue Katas and Rob Brown. And I don't have enough words to express appreciation for their efforts over the last six years and being able to spend the time that we have to come together. We still have good discussions, and we can have disagreements at times, but in the end, we also always seek for understanding and start adding up. You know, the meetings, at least two meetings a month, we called many extra meetings when we were in the construction phase of, but I would count over those six years, at least 150 meetings, not counting the construction meetings. And then when you consider the hours spent together at state convention and the regional meetings that we would go to for continuing education, if you will, as board members. You guys were always there, well-prepared, and I guess I'll open it up to other board members, or if Nick, you wanted to say anything.
So both, both Rob and Sue have been with me my entire time here in Hudson. We all came about the same time. I remember back to interviewing with them on a stage at Lee Auditorium at Willow River and fielding questions from school board at that time, school board candidates. And then by the time I got here, end of June, you were already school board members and working through, and you both have been, you know, very, very supportive of me and very supportive of the district and what we're trying to do here. And it shows that there's, there's no doubt that anybody should have that you always put kids first in your decisions and your deliberations and your thinking. And so we are, we are very fortunate to have had the opportunity to have you on the board for the last six years, and I find myself extremely fortunate to have known you for the last six years. And because as Jamie said, we do spend a lot of time together. And if you remember back to that first year, when we were still doing individual committee work, we were averaging four meetings a month. And we, we had, I think, 48 or 50 meetings in that first year, I think, you know, six years ago. So we're probably, you know, close to that 200-plus meeting mark. And so but no, it's been, it's been a lot of fun, and I'll turn it over to any of the other board members that want to have a comment.
Bruce?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for, you know, some fun times. I mean, we, we had a lot of fun. We had a lot of, you know, discussions and debates as well, and I think that that is what pushes Hudson and the district to be better. I'll miss hanging out with you guys on every other Monday night. But something tells me you guys will still be around and, you know, staying involved in some way, shape, or form. But but, you know, as Jamie and Nick have said, thank you, you know, makes, makes a difference to spend the time that you guys did. So appreciate that.
Heather?
But I have learned so much from both of you. I have appreciated getting to know you both as board members, but also as people I would echo the point. I think Rob, one of the things I appreciate is the way that you have encouraged us to not only think outside the box, but to look at and learn from other districts. And that's something that I will try to honor as you are, as you are leading us to not recreate the wheel. Sue, I think we will all look for fonts and serise and color and remember you. But also you set the bar very high for what it means to be a preferred board member, what it means to really take seriously the things on our agenda and preparation, especially difficult conversations. And I appreciate that, and I know we will all strive to fulfill that. So thank you both. You're going to be so missed in these conversations, but hopefully not in my life, because I hope to stay connected with you. So thank you for your service.
Bob?
I'd just like to thank both of you, obviously, being newer to the board. Sue took me under her wing and even more so than Jamie pushed me for getting involved with WASB. She even, she agreed to drive and just so make sure I got there. When, when I might be looking for an excuse not to, but um, well, like Heather said, the dedication, the reading the board packet before and being prepared, there's no way any of us can be as prepared as Sue for these meetings, and it does set a great standard. And, and again, again, with what Heather said with Rob, when we went through the construction, when we went through the referendum before I was on the board, Rob was always there to kind of give insight on some things he had heard or some people or some other districts that were going through a similar situation. It was great information to have. I will miss having him, you know, be that guy to take the delegate work away from me for the state convention, but we have two more people that are going to hopefully be under the, under that same rule of, so thank you both very much. But you could become friends more than anything on this. Thank you.
And Carrie, our most verbose board member, so.
Well, I would like to echo what everyone has said. I hadn't thought about actually the number of meetings and the number of hours we've spent together. It's, I guess we'd have to love you or hate you, and I'll defer on weighing in on that, but you, you both were very instrumental with the construction process, and I appreciate all those extra hours during this past year. You have we, we all have, but you in particular were always very vocal for the support of the outside activities for the kids, even when they couldn't be face-to-face and learning at all times. And Sue, I think you probably stretched all of us in the district administration and this board to adopt some policies before we would have ever gotten there on our own. So I think you each have made a very lasting impact, and I'll miss you professionally and personally. So thank you.
Very well said, Carrie, and all the other board members. I guess, should we give them a chance to say something?
No, I wanted to say, well,
Go ahead, Sue.
I do have something to say, but I wanted to compliment my work with Rob. And if nothing else, I've learned Delta T and a whole bunch of other architectural HVAC. I mean, I probably lost my memory of all of those things, but we did a lot of putting on the hard hats and walking around, but I always think of Rob as a brother. And we started off going for coffee. And when we were both boarded and, and that was very instrumental, I think, in the way that while we might not always agree, we, we get along, I think, in, in that sense of camaraderie.
And Rob?
Well, first, Sue, I now know the names of colors that I did not know existed prior to our time together, but I, I guess to be brief, I have appreciated working with everybody, administration, our board. I will miss our board work. Most importantly, I think I will miss the, the student and staff recognitions. That's, that's just something that's, you just, I'm in awe of the stuff, the activities, the successes that our, our students and our staff have. But what I've come to realize is that with the technology now, I can still watch that stuff and then turn the board meeting off. So, so no more three hours for me. Four. Anyway, but everybody, thank you so much for, for everything.
So you had something else?
I just wanted to make a little closing remark. I already promised Dave I'd use one of his favorite words, so here goes. No, I was gonna say that I think the two things I'm most gonna miss are the relationships and the rigor. My brain is probably gonna I think, I think my brain's gonna go dead now because, you know, I won't, I won't remember operating budgets, budgets and, you know, what the butts in seats in each of the schools, et cetera. But no, I want to thank Nick. Nick, as I said one other time, we jumped over the broom same time coming into things, and I think you've just been very notable in just jumping in right away with the community engagement and the referendum and then the construction. And then, of course, this last year navigating through the COVID-19 pandemic. And then with the board, I, I like this expression. I love the esprit de corps that we have with one another, and I have really valued our thorough deliberations. And I've always felt safe with all of you in this group to when we participate in sharing my And I've always felt safe with all of you in this group to, when we participate in sharing my perspectives and opinions. And administration has just been a cornerstone of operations and conduct the real work here. And I, I know I'm going to put this in as a request. I know one time we talked about less reports and so on. But I would love if we could hear from time to time, not the required reports, of course, that you do months at every meeting. But I'd love to hear more about what you're doing in your own suite of offices with your staff. Like Erin, I know sometimes you and your group do a book study and so on, you know, related to some current topic. So, or how you have in-service Tim to go over financial audits and so on. So I wouldn't mind, you know, a few more PowerPoints if you feel, well, I guess I'll watch from afar, but. But anyway, I'm very proud of the Hudson School District and its rigorous learning environment. But I also love that we have focused on being inclusive and supportive and we are very forward-thinking. And I'll close with saying that I offer best wishes to our new board members, Polly, Molly, excuse me, I got the M and the P in there. Molly Powers, who will be a new and improved seat compared to what I did. And Kate Garza, and of course our returning incumbent Bob. So thank you for everything.
Well, I want to again, thank you. Good comments all around. I just quick, doing quick math notice that it's quite unusual to have the same board and no change for three years. But that kind of constantness allowed us to, I think, all grow together. And, but the one thing with change is we know that it's constant. And it, it ends up being the case that when we, Bruce and I have been the longest serving on the board, came on, there were people who had been on nine, 12 years. Dan Turner, I was 20 years. It's, it is, experience is a good thing, but everyone brings their perspective. So we go from 5.7 years of average experience to now four. And, but yet we'll have new perspectives and look forward to those. Unfortunately, they have some very big shoes to fill and people and to try and measure up to your dedication to students and always putting them first. So thank you again. Join me. And with that comment, we have citizens request to speak and we had one request, Carol Dolly. And she wishes to speak on saying congratulations and farewell to Rob and Sue.
Thank you. I would not have done that. And I'm sorry I have a written, not a script, but I ramble and you'd be here for much longer than you'd care to be here tonight. So this is for you that I've written it down. But I've spent quite a bit of time trying to, trying to narrow it down because there's so many wonderful things to say about Sue and Rob. So I'm just going to start and no questions afterwards. Just kidding. I'm Carol Dolly and it's nice to see so many familiar faces. I was surprised that even with my mask on, so many people recognized me. It's great. But as some of you know, I have recently retired, but I have had the privilege of teaching choral music in the Hudson School District for 40 years. After Wisconsin, Act 10 took place in 2011. And until my retirement, I sat on what was originally called the Handbook Committee. I think it has a different name now, but it was a group consisting of teachers and administration, working together to solve problems as we made through, made our way through a new era. In my last year of teaching, I was president of the Hudson Teachers Education Association. I'm giving you some of this background to lend credence to what I'm going to say. As you can imagine, I have seen numerous school board members come and go over the decades. But I'm here this evening to say goodbye to two of Hudson's finest, Sue Katas and Rob Brown. And I hope I can do this without choking up, but I'm, I'll do it. Sue, I've known you as a neighbor and as a board member. And I remember contacting you about issues which fellow teachers would bring to my attention, even after I'd retired. And you listened and you sought out the answers and you got back to me with knowledge and advice and you never let me down. Thank you. And Rob, I first got to know you when you were instrumental, so instrumental in helping get that referendum passed in 2015. Especially for the technological updates that the Hudson High School Auditorium was so in need of. And my son Stephen Dolly still talks about you. He worked endlessly on that referendum. And he sings your praises, literally and figuratively. He's still doing music. Anyway, he's, your praises to this day for the support that he received from you. So thank you for that. But Rob and Sue, both of you, you both sat on this board for six years with a common sense approach to education. With open, broad and transparent communication. Your primary focus was on the students of Hudson, the quality of their education and keeping them safe. And you kept it balanced with input from parents, from teachers, from the administration. You humbly listened, you researched, you brought to the table nonpartisan informed intelligence, along with your own extensive backgrounds in numerous areas. When I said, I'm here this evening to say goodbye to two of Hudson's finest, I mean the finest. I've been around and I've seen a lot. And these two, Sue and Rob, are two of Hudson's finest and they will sorely be missed. On behalf of all my teacher friends, current and retired, not only do I wish the current board continued success and the new board, but I extend my heartfelt thanks and enormous congratulations to Rob and Sue for jobs well done. I wish you all both the best and remember, don't look back because you're not going that way. Thank you.
Very well said, Carol, and we do have mementos now. We have plaques that are on their way. But we, we have some blankets to keep you warm and make sure that that's right. All right. Well, now we are to reports and we have a high schooling scheduling update. And I believe we still have Principal Ballard in the house. Or do you have the, do you want to do the, the curriculum update first? Let's, let's go ahead. That's fine.
It will be a little bit more dramatic. Yeah, they've, they've got some stage show antics planned. Suzie Anderson and Laura Malarchek, instructional coach at the high school and middle school respectively, to give us our update on secondary English language arts.
This is definitely a difficult act to follow. We are going to move into these required presentations as, as Sue referred to them as. But really I think this is just a profound example of how fortunate we are to work in a district with not only excellence in students, but just quality leaders that we get to come to work and communicate with. So I, to thank you for the service that you've given to Hudson. So as Dave said, we are Suzie and Laura and we're presenting on the curriculum improvement process. We are currently in phase six of the curriculum improvement process, which has us reflect on what our instruction and curriculum looks like compared to where we would like it to be, based on best practices and assessment data. In order to accommodate for kind of the hecticness of this school year with COVID-19, we've shifted a few steps to the beginning of next year. And as a result, we are focusing on best practices this year. And we will review assessment data and stakeholder feedback prior to beginning phase one, which Suzie will talk about in a few slides. Part of our work is doing this deep dive into best practices and we've decided to look at the book Focus by Mike Schmoker, who is a leading expert in literacy instruction. And he indicates the key to success is a combination of simplicity and diligence applied with fierce exclusive devotion to scaffolding, scaffolding instruction within a literacy framework that's proven to work. In this way, he moves away from the instructional fads, the ebb and flow through the times and really focuses on students, on teaching students to construct their own knowledge about text by providing numerous opportunities to practice reading, discussing and writing with purpose. And also making sure we have literacy-based authentic assessments that inform our progress and our instruction. Although there are clear parameters and practices the framework requires, there are so many different ways to facilitate instruction within that it allows much needed space for individual teacher autonomy and expertise. Part of this work Suzie and I were able to facilitate a group, the entire 612 instructional ELA team, which we haven't been able to do in the past. So this was a really great opportunity. But we wanted to have teachers do a deep dive into the book Focus. And so on that day, teachers built instructional look fours within literacy. If someone came in and observed a literacy-based lesson, we could identify what they could expect to see teachers doing and what they could expect to see students doing. In other words, they identified the indicators of success. We knew that we were working with a room of extremely talented, dedicated and passionate and capable educators. And so we knew that we needed to honor their professionalism. And we found out that day that within the 612 team, there's 522 years of collective experience within ELA in that room that we were in. And so it was really important for us to honor that work. We, so we wanted to give teachers space to synthesize. We wanted to give teachers space to synthesize what they had learned in the book study with their professional practice. And we saw and know that there was so much overlap between the two. On the screen in front of you, you'll see the writing that shows up directly on the posters. This is where teachers identified instructional priorities within Schmoker's literacy framework. And the post-its on the side are a combination of successful literacy practices from individual teachers and how they've used some of Schmoker's look fours into practice within their classrooms already. As you can see, teachers are building a concrete and shared belief about the parameters of quality literacy instruction. A parameter they'll fill with the autonomy of their craft centered around what is best for the kids who show up in their classrooms each day.
This summer, we also had a group of high school and middle school teachers who were able to attend a two-day virtual conference with Kelly Gallagher. Kelly Gallagher is a teacher and an instructional coach in California, but he's also an author, a speaker, a consultant. And he's kind of becoming known as a leading voice in literacy in education. And so this conference really focused on building deeper readers and writers. And so we took a lot of information from two days and we kind of just boiled it into a few key points and some takeaways. So one takeaway was that we constantly need to be looking for ways to increase, increase the amount of reading that students are doing in school. So he was talking just really about schools in general, but he really made the point clear that volume is really important when it comes to reading and writing. He also talked a lot about how students need to be doing three levels of reading in school. So in school, kids need to be reading challenge texts, they need to be reading just right texts, and they need to be reading texts for enjoyment. So this is also an idea that we're also seeing reflected in the revised standards that came about in 2020. And you'll hear a little bit more about that also in an upcoming slide. Another thing he stressed about reading is really just the importance in choice. And those aren't new ideas. I mean, these are things, some of these are just good reminders for us too. And so whether that choice is done in a lit circle, a choice novel unit, or if we look for ways to incorporate independent reading into our classrooms. As far as writing is concerned, Gallagher also feels that we greatly need to increase the volume of writing that takes place in the classroom. He states that students need a lot of low-pressure, non-graded writing. And that teachers also need to be asking students to do more generative writing. So writing where students were asking students to discover what they think and what they know, rather than just telling us through writing what they know. He also stresses the importance of using model texts. So if students are going to become great writers, we need to show them the deliberate choices that authors make when they produce great writing. So for example, if he's teaching a unit on argumentative writing, the students won't just be asked to write one large argumentative piece. He said throughout the whole unit, they're going to be looking at lots of argumentative writing and discussing argumentative writing, as well as writing varying lengths of argumentative writing. Another thing that came up was placing more value on narrative writing. He just really feels that narrative writing has been wrongly devalued and that it's imperative to all the other modes of writing. And for example, he would say like how persuasive it is, we all know that, you know, we can throw out facts and statistics, but if we can also tell a really good story, that's another way that we can actually be really persuasive. So the idea of increasing volume is something that we should always be asking ourselves. So are we asking students to read and write enough? And if not, how can we get them reading, reading and writing more? So in 2020, Wisconsin completed its revised ELA standards. There are currently 29 standards, nine reading standards. Most of the reading standards apply both to literary and informational texts. There's nine writing standards, five speaking and listening standards, and six language standards. The revised standards also now have overarching statements. These are for the four overarching statements for all four different strands. And they have introduction pages for each strand. So these give teachers more insight about how the standards are designed to be implemented. For example, if you look at the one for reading, it now specifically states in there that one of the purpose for student reading is for enjoyment. This also aligns with what we've been learning in some of our research of best practices. And then the next slide shows the introduction for the writing standards. It states that career and college readiness, students for career and college readiness, students need to write consistently for high and low stakes purposes. It identifies that students will write argumentative, informative and narrative writing, and that they're going to do that in creative, formal and reflective modes. And then it goes into more detail and really thoroughly describes those different modes. The addition of the overarching statements and the introduction pages will really help teachers to feel more confident that they are carrying out the standards the way they were intended to be addressed. So next year, we will spend a lot of our curriculum time focusing on getting to know these new standards, prioritizing them and deconstructing them. And then we'll also spend a lot of time evaluating our program, looking for strengths and areas of need. And then we will revisit some of these best practices that we learned about this year and see how those might be used to help us address some of those needs that we might have.
Before we get into questions, I'm going to make a few comments. The, the work that Suzie and Laura are doing is fantastic work. And it exemplifies exactly what we're trying to get to with the revision of our curriculum improvement process. And that is making sure that it's not a stop and start sort of sporadic improvement process, but instead it's very smooth and continual. And we don't feel at any point that we're not engaged in curriculum, in curricular improvement. So phase six in the past was sort of a placeholder. Not a lot happened. Now it's all about reflecting and investigating. And so the work with Kelly Gallagher and the work with the professional learning they're doing with Mike Schmoker is all about that investigation, making sure that the teachers are constantly fed and their professional learning is always on an upward trajectory. And just doing fantastic work with that. Very much appreciated.
All right. Any other comments or questions then of this?
Just make one comment. First of all, I love the work that you're putting in here. I think the statistic I heard is that the average US citizen reads one book after they are done with their academic career. Which is something that I hope the Hudson School District like far surpasses. And I think the work that they put in at the younger ages helps them particularly finding things that they enjoy to read. Not very good at that myself. I'm trying to do more of it. I love reading. I just don't read enough books for enjoyment. But I, I, I do think that the more that we can teach our kids the, the joy of reading, the more likely that they're going to take that on and, and then, you know, get something from it. So thanks for all the effort.
Yes, Rob.
So kudos on all the collaboration. I think that's absolutely fantastic. Is there, with, with that work that you did, is there any one or two do difference, do betters? Some improvement that you two can speak to that came through the collaboration?
Trying to incorporate more reading. I mean, Kelly Gallagher talked a lot about how giving his kids 10 minutes a day of independent reading and how that just led, he said, I don't have the statistics in front of me, but he kept track of that. And so he had kids one year, how much did they read without having that time, that 10 minutes a day? And then how much they read the next year? And the least amount of books that was read was seven in a year. A kid read seven books in one year. And that kid had read zero books the year before. And then, and then there was other kids who just read a tremendous amount. I think sometimes they get into a text and then they like it. And then we see them reading at home more. So sometimes it can be a lot more than just the 10 minutes, but even if it's just the 10 minutes, how much that can really build. So I would say that and, and choice, like when we can have kids picking like lit circles, like we're maybe all reading about a same theme, but everybody's reading a book that's, you know, might be a little bit more interesting to them. I think anytime they have choice, there's more buy-in. Is there anything else that you?
I was going to say, both. Yes, both Schmoker and Gallagher really highlight reading and writing for purpose and using model texts to use as kind of a starting off point to have something to aspire to. And to have kids really spend some time with those model texts and try to create that kind of expertise in their own writing. And so kind of both of these gentlemen who are studying intensely really emphasize the use of model texts and just having students really understand the purpose of, of what they're reading, why they're reading it, who their audience is when they're writing. And so just kind of some tightening up around there is what we were kind of gathering as well.
Heather?
I'm, I'm, I'm curious about how, if at all, into the standards and instruction right now, how online content plays a role. I mean, I think about my own kids who are reading all the time, but they're reading four-sentence posts on somebody's Snapchat. And yet, and yet it's, it's communication, right? I mean, they are writing, they are consuming. So how, I mean, we still want to encourage them to actually read books, even if it's a digital book. But how, if at all, are standards and instructional models adapting to kind of bring this, this new form of content production and consumption into what we think of as reading and writing?
I think one really important way that this has kind of been helped along throughout the school year is the use of breakout rooms and kind of making the discussion process in a synchronous learning environment, no matter where you are in the learning community, be able to happen has been kind of huge and kind of maintaining this sort of model. You know, I think the teachers in this district have done an outstanding job of recreating those authentic discussions about text, even if people are at home. And so that's kind of been something the teachers have done a really good job maintaining this school year. So I think with the support of the district and the support of the technology, the way we do it has changed a little bit, but not necessarily the process of what we ask kids to do and how we ask them to interact with text.
Right. Any other comments or questions? I want to thank you for your report and I it just echoing what I saw in the PowerPoint and, and here on a regular basis, just in order to get proficient at anything, it just takes time, whether it's being a proficient board member or whether it's a good musician, but you know, reading takes time. And in today's society, kids have so many things that take them away from books. And we've seen in our lifetimes, you know, the average TV watching, you know, is up to 30 hours or more in a week and no one is reading, you know, even a fraction of that. So we gotta do what we can. And I think it's the key is going to be this reading for fun. And allowing kids to do that is to have fun with their reading. So much of the reading is so purposeful that, you know, it's to take in some knowledge, memorize it for a while, then spit it back out on a piece of paper. But all those other avenues, creative writing, do better when people just spend the time, have some fun with it and learn to love reading. Scary stat there, one book after, after their academic careers. But anyway, thank you again for all your work and in this very important area. Thank you. All right. Now maybe we'll go to the 4K update. No, just kidding. Be careful when you allow yourself to be postponed. You could postpone yourself right into the eight o'clock hour. Yeah.
I do enjoy being here with you. Yes, absolutely. And I will just echo this, some of the sentiments that were shared earlier. Just really neat to see a cohesive school board. And that's what it's been during my first year here. Doesn't always necessarily mean you have to agree on everything, but having respectful conversation and dialogue about what's best for kids and staff is really important. So thank you for your contributions. I wanted to give the board a, a quick update on our movement to eight periods in the high school schedule beginning in the fall of 22, 23. And just for a little bit of history, just to take you back briefly. You know, there was a movement to an eight-period day over five years ago is where that, when that work ultimately began, a committee was formed. Many hours of research was, was put into various schedules. There was many, many site visits that had been completed. And even if you go back to this fall, we even attempted to expedite that, that moved to an eight-period as early as this, this next fall through a straight eight schedule. And then we ultimately decided to take it back to committee. So, so in that whole process, I'll just share with you began really with our department heads. Some, just some honest grassroots conversations with our department heads. We had, I believe, three meetings with our department heads that where we just, where we focused on schedule. They took information back to their departments and then we brought that information back for committee to talk a little bit about findings. And then at that juncture, we, we reconvene that original school schedule committee that we, that had been working on it for years. Transition from department heads to that committee. And with those group of people, huge hats off, they, they have spent so many hours on this. We had numerous meetings, both in person and virtually to discuss the best, the best schedule to move forward with. We explored many that they already had and including some that they hadn't taken a look at. But really put in just a ton of time. And then while that was taking place concurrently, our administration was meeting with the student council. I believe we had four meetings with our student council students to gather input from them, kind of share with them what we were thinking and the pros and cons that the adults were thinking. And then they were able to provide us some thoughts about what they were kind of thinking. And so that was really a pretty neat experience. And then even coinciding with that, we just met, I think we had three meetings with just senior only student council students because I thought, well, they've really had the opportunity to go all the way through and they might be able to really speak freely about what their thoughts are as well. So the end of the day, we landed quite honestly, where the original committee landed, and that was with what's called an AB block. It's roughly 86 or so minutes per class period, four class periods per day. And they just rotate. You have four one day, four the next, and then you start back over with your A day. So that's, that's ultimately where we landed. We identified, or were able to identify a number of advantages to working in that block. The, the obvious one is the opportunity for deeper learning and, and being able to really dive deeper. And, and that doesn't matter whether you're talking, you know, what class period you're talking about or what, what, what subject area you're talking, the opportunity to go deeper. We also talked about having fewer classes and how that relates to the number of transitions. Transitions meaning times that we have to break and go into the hallway, which can, which can serve as a break, but it can also serve as non-instructional time. So we have fewer transitions and fewer daily classes. And then the other component that we looked at was the intervention opportunities that are available. We will, we will have some inherent opportunities to reach students, both struggling and ones that are excelling, just like Zoe, Zoe Field that was here earlier to this evening. She would have an opportunity to go out and reach out to some of those very counselors or, or teachers that that, that she identified there with, within the confines of her schedule. So there's some real advantages that way. In terms of our challenges, you know, obviously our teachers are going to have some, some challenges with realigning scope and sequence. That's going to be, you know, a, a, a task that we're going to have to kind of adjust and readjust, I would assume in our first couple of years working through the block. The number one challenge is going to be engagement, student engagement for an 86-minute period. It's going to cause us to rethink how we deliver our instruction and how we engage students. I, I mean, it goes without saying, we're not going to be able to just lecture and take notes in, in, in high school. We are going to have to be rather dynamic, breaking our lessons up into four and five different smaller parts. Getting kids active and moving and engaged with one another. And quite honestly, in a rather collaborative environment. Another, another challenge that we're going to have is just that staff guidance and support and training, right? So anytime you take on any new initiative, crucially important that we provide some professional development behind that and lend support, not only prior to the rollout, but also in, in those first year or two, as we, as people learn really what best practices are and become comfortable in, in providing instruction in that format. And then finally is, you know, the, the final thing, the other consideration is certainly, first one is the impact it's going to have on our students, right? And how do we feel about that? And quite honestly, in my 20 some years of being an administrator, I've always found the students to be the most resilient group when it comes to change in a, in a school. I feel really confident in their ability, particularly if we take, if the adults take care of what we need to take care of in the right manner. And that, and specifically meaning if we're able to provide an, an engaging experience for them throughout their class day. I have little doubt that our students will, will thrive. I would be remiss not to mention that we also spent about a three or four-hour Zoom meeting with Dr. Michael Reddick. Dr. Michael Reddick is a nationally renowned individual that works with schools on their schedules. We really learned some great do's and don'ts, things to avoid, potential pitfalls, a lot of, a lot of really positive suggestions from, from him. In terms of our next steps, I think that I see it as really twofold. First of all, this some, early this summer, we're going to be running some sample schedules of what it would look like so that we can actually take a look at it and see how that would play with our students here in Hudson. And then the second component to that is just communicating that plan out to all stakeholders. Many of our staff have been aware or are aware of the direction that we're going. They've had, they've had an opportunity to express some of the, the positives and the negatives with, with whatever decision that was going to come out of that committee. So we feel really good about that. And then I'd be remiss not to mention that the work that Ivy Wheeler and Dave have done, Aaron, in terms of just beginning some of those conversations about what our professional development will be look like for our teachers and how, and begin to identify ways that we can lend support for them.
Any comments or questions from board members? Rob?
So with the shorter class period, are you thinking where it's feasible to have more of a flipped classroom? You know, instruction outside of class or more hands-on collaboration during the period?
Oh, let me just clarify. It's not going to be a shorter class period. It'll be a longer class period. So we're going to go we're going to go to four, four blocks. Yes, four blocks of 80-plus minutes. So four, they'd have four classes per day. We'll call that, the first day they do that will be the A day. The second day will be the B day. There are other four classes, so eight classes total. One of which might be a study hall, potentially.
Right. Other questions or comments? Very good. Well, thank you for the report. Sounds like you're working hard to get that buy-in that we need. Or do we have one?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I know last summer, when this was initially going to be implemented in the fall, there was a great deal of reluctance. Would you say that the staff is completely on board with this now? Or is there still a fair amount of resistance?
I would feel, yeah, good question. I'd feel it's, I feel it's been, excuse me. I, I feel like it's, we've addressed it. And I, I'm not going to suggest that it's 100% on board. I don't know that anything that we would present would be, you know, 100% of our 110 teachers would all be in favor. But I will share with you that there is a significant percentage of people that are ready to go and embrace the AB block. It is ultimately where they landed after their first four years or so of work. And, and so that's where they originally had landed. We took a really fresh set of eyes. We put up multiple models. I think I spoke with 11 different principals from other school districts, kept bringing the information back, and that's where we landed. So I think there's a tremendous amount of both teacher and administrative support for the AB block.
Thank you.
Sue?
Yeah, Mike, is Ellsworth, Ellsworth is on longer periods, aren't they?
They might be, Sue. I, I, I can't confirm that they are because they're not one of those 10 or 15 that I look most closely at. But a number of them in our conference and, and in the area are in the AB block. It's a, it's a relatively common model. Quite honestly, that's been implemented as many as 20 years ago. So, so yeah, there's, there's a lot of schools that have had a lot of success with it.
Right. Any other comments, questions? Right, Heather?
No, I was just gonna say that I think what would be helpful, and this is I'm sure part of the plan anyway, would be, I mean, I'm, I'm guessing there are known kind of pros and cons about this switch. So I think as a board member, it would be helpful to, I mean, what the, an obvious one to me seems like, oh, so if my kid misses one day of school, now they've missed two days. I mean, so there are some cons that I think we should be transparent about and be able to speak to. But also hopefully have the much longer list of pros that help folks explain if they're asking kind of why we decided to go this route. So that would be, that would be helpful as we're rolling this out to the community and maybe getting some questions.
Yeah, yeah. And I can certainly provide that for you, Heather. And, and the other thing is, is quite honestly, this is, to me, this is kind of our first step, right? So we have to, we have a lot of people to communicate this to, including our students, our, our, our families, our parents within the community. And then there are a number of other offshoot things that are going to be related to this as well, right? Like graduation requirements, what is that going to look like? How are we going to transition kids from various, you know, the, this incoming freshman group relative to our juniors, right? Now that we're offering an additional opportunity for a full class, a full class every year for four years, you know, that's going to change, change some things. I will share with you, our, our specialists are very, very excited about the opportunity to expand, to expand courses and electives for kids. So there's, there's going to be some real pros to it. And, and it's not going to be without some cons. I mean, you're, you're going to give up some things to get, but we can certainly spell those out.
Well, with this being April, then your next report on this subject would be what, October?
That would be, that'd be wonderful. Yep. Yep. We can do October, earlier, later.
Yeah.
Yeah. But no, I, I'd like to be able to get some things out to parents prior to October. I'd like to be able to do that this spring, if that's okay.
Right. Understand it's a process, so thank you.
Yeah, it's a, it's a large, it's a long process. It's been really well thought out and you know, and just most importantly, I think giving people a little bit of a heads up about what, that it's coming and have an opportunity for some dialogue and certainly reach out and answer questions.
Right. Very good.
Mr. President, interlocutorate, we're looking at implementation for the 22, 23 school year. Is that when we're planning to do this? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. 4K update. Dave?
Yes, thank you very much. So want to provide you an update for our, what we're looking at doing next year with 4K. This, we had a conversation about this at the last work session. This reflects some adjustments from what we had originally talked about. I'll talk through each component of this update and then talk about some of the adjustments that were made based on feedback that we've received. So first I wanted to provide you a history of the 4K program. We're in year four right now. And for each one of those years in this document, you can see the number of community partners we had, started with 10. We are down to nine, one community partner. They, they closed, so they obviously can no longer be a community partner. And you can see the number And you can see the number of students that we had in our community partner sites, as well as the number of students that we had in our district sites. You'll also notice that the district sites have shifted a little bit. So we started with a class at North Hudson and Hudson Prairie for two years, and the last two years now, we've had our district site at Willow River. The district site at Willow River, it, it's very much like a 4K center. Spent some nice additions and adjustments to that space that allow for a, just a, a nice, very cohesive sort of structure. The other thing that's unique about the Willow River program is it is, it involves co-teaching where students with disabilities are taught right alongside their peers, and it is a fully inclusive model. So students with any range of disabilities, they receive their education there. So they have a special education teacher, general education teacher for each classroom all the time, plus the assistants that are necessary to run the program. The teachers in that program have been absolutely outstanding, and they're really leading the charge as we look to expand co-teaching. There's a lot of great work happening there. So the proposal as it stands right now is to open an AM section at EP Rock and then a PM section either at North Hudson or Hudson Prairie. Based on the way the numbers are coming in, it looks like North Hudson would be the site that would make the most sense. That also is beneficial because we don't have any 4K sites north of Malaloos. So that would be nice in terms of regional access for folks that live on the north end of the district. And then maintain at least one AM and one PM section at Willow River. All of that is completely obviously contingent upon enrollment. It has been our design from the very beginning to do our best to give families their very first choice. We can't always do that, but we've always been able to honor first or second choice. We also look at, there's three variables that play into those choices. One is the site, the location. The other is transportation. We can't obviously provide transportation from every corner of the district to every 4K site. And then the other is the availability of RAP care. When we talk about RAP care, we're talking about the, it's, it's essentially school age care for the opposite end of the 4K program. So if it's an AM 4K program, we're talking about school age care in the afternoon. If it's a PM program, talking about school age care in the morning. There's also, in some sites, you can have before-school or after-school care. We're talking about that period from about six o'clock till 8:30 in the morning or after-school from about four o'clock till six in the evening. Those are all different components that obviously are variously important to families. So they need to find the program that works best for them. The other thing that the, the, one of the big shifts from the community perspective in this proposal is that we'd be looking at offering RAP care at some of our district sites. The reason that's important is because we haven't done that in the past, and obviously that impacts our community providers if that was something that they were offering and is sort of their competitive niche. As we look at the availability, we can only do that if the numbers justify having RAP care at each site. As the numbers are coming in right now, a lot of the folks, we'll go through the numbers, but a lot of the folks that we've reached out to said they can't really commit until they know precisely how much RAP care would cost. So that's an overview of the, of the proposal. Again, we have to look at overall interest in registration, but then also their interest in RAP care. Right now, Tracy's worked up the numbers with her staff, we'd need a minimum of 10 students that are interested in RAP care to be able to offer it. Right now, the way the numbers are rolling in, it looks like that would not be available at all sites. We wouldn't be able to offer RAP care at all sites. The next section deals with RAP care fees. So Tracy worked with Michelle Hagan to generate a, a fee for both the RAP care, again, opposite their instruction, and the before and after care. You can see $23 a day for the RAP care, $31 if it includes the before or after. That's within the range of our community providers, provided three examples. One of the things that makes this challenging is everyone, all the providers can structure their fees, whatever works best for their program. Sometimes they have one fee for the entire day. Sometimes they break it down into three sections like we were describing, that's the way we look at it. Other times they have it broken down where they, they shift a lower price for what they would consider RAP care, but then make that up for the before and after. So you can see just three examples. Site A, $30.75 per day, that includes RAP care. Site B, $26.80 for RAP care, but then it's up to $35.80 if you include the before and after. Site C, $15 for RAP care, but then 35 if you include the before and after. So Tracy, Michelle, look for a price range that fell within that range. It's not the lowest, it's not the highest.
Dave, can I just add one other statement about this? That our community providers have more flexibility than we would as far as families who may request, I just need RAP care on Tuesday, Thursday, or I just need RAP care on Monday, Wednesday. We would require families Monday through Friday. So we, we do have less flexibility within our offering than what some of our community providers have.
Yep, thank you, Trace. That's an important point. So where it stands right now, we have interest from 95 families. They've expressed interest in, in attending a school site. The advantage to attending a school site from our perspective is if a family is, if a student is going, say they are going to attend North Hudson, the family may consider it advantageous to attend 4K in North Hudson, transition right into kindergarten the next year. But Tracy provides one example where that might not be the best case scenario for that family, and there are a lot of other reasons. Many families will prefer to be in a childcare environment and figure they're going to transition to fifth grade, and they'll be there till 12th grade, they'll go in the public school system at that point. So a lot of variables that play into the interest. With every one of those individual fa, or families, we've had individual conversations. I use that pronoun very loosely because for the most part, it's actually Kelly Schickling, who is administrative assistant in the 4K program, that is having the individual conversations, trying to figure out where the numbers would all fit. And you can see we have an average of 62 4K students attending our school sites. That's what we've had over the course of the three years. As it looks right now, Willow River is the, the site that's receiving the most interest in terms of a school site. And then EP Rock and North Hudson would be in that order essentially. Until we can share officially the RAP care costs, we won't know the total interest because there's about 25 families that are saying, I just can't commit one way or the other until I know those costs. So that's where we stand right now. Obviously, we're concerned for our community partners. They've been outstanding in this process from the beginning. The conversations that Sue Helmers and I have had with the directors for the 4K sites have been very interesting and in many ways, very rewarding. They, they expressed a few concerns. I listed four dates essentially that tell the story of how we've been, how and when we've been communicating with the providers. Sue does a great job with 4K advisory council meetings. There's a teacher meeting and a director meeting once a month. That's our opportunity to learn together and grow the program together. As we talked with the, the providers and the directors, they had a variety of concerns. So I just want to share some of the concerns or the themes for the concerns that we heard. First, there was the concern about RAP care prices. Obviously concerned that we were going to come in much lower and draw a competitive advantage. So we made sure that was not the case in the price structure that Tracy and Michelle came up with. Another big concern is the number of classes we would offer next year and into the future. So we reduced that to mitigate that impact, and also it, it honestly, it matches the numbers we're seeing. When we originally sent out a survey to get interest, there was a lot of interest. When we started calling and actually looking for confirmation, that dropped down a little bit. So we think this is a nice balance of meeting the needs and interest of families and also slowing down the implementation a little bit, so sites get a chance to adjust and make sure they understand where we're moving. There was a concern about the potential future expansion, like, okay, is this step one? And then we're going to look at making it a completely district-based program. First of all, we don't want to do that. Second of all, we couldn't do that. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be possible. There'd be too many students for us to handle within our current setup, even if we used all of the available space, it wouldn't be possible. And one of the advantages of having a community partnership like this is not just finding spots for kids. We know there will always be four-year-olds attending sites outside of our district. So by partnering with these sites, we know that we can offer what we think is a really high-quality experience for all of the four-year-olds that participate in the program in the community. So no, no design on expanding and taking over that. The biggest concern that was shared was timing. Just, they felt that the notice was late, difficult for them to plan. That was the, the most common concern that we heard. The, the, when I said there was a rewarding component, it was a concern that was shared that, it was actually quite heartwarming. The concern was the sites wanted to continue to have a strong partnership. They valued the professional learning, they valued the opportunities a district could bring to them. They just valued the partnership, and we do too, so we certainly don't want to harm that. So that is what we're looking at right now, looking for your feedback as board members.
I have a question on, you're saying everything is kind of dependent, waiting to see where fees are going to be set. And I presume it's the board that sets the fee? Is that, or?
Yeah, we are looking for, for direction from the board tonight.
Okay, because I didn't see it on our action items, so.
Correct. So I think consensus typically would be per view of administration, but also looking for consensus from the board. Certainly don't want to do something that isn't aligned with your thing.
Sure. And, and so I just want to kick off the discussion with that part of it, just about the fees, where we have Site A, Site B, and Site C. That's three of the nine or 10 partners we have now, right? And so how do the other six or seven stack up with the 23 and 31? And then my compound question is, why not 25 and 33, so that we're a little bit closer to the median?
So Tracy would be more equipped to speak to the other sites. One thing I will say is that not all of them, we, we weren't able to look at all of their price structures because they weren't all available. And some just aren't comparable because they have sort of like a, just a, a different structure that's hard to break down. But Tracy knows a little bit more about that, so I'll turn it over to her for the, for the first part of that question.
Yeah, I can continue to add some of the, the pricing. So if we had Site D would be the 23 per day for RAP care with $43 per day with the before and after. I mean, so it, the, the range for some of these are quite wide. And so we looked at what, what we needed on our end as far as funds for Fund 80 so that we would operate without going into debt with this piece and, and having the appropriate staffing for it. So I mean, that's, when we're looking at setting our fees, that's, that's what, that's where we start. What do we need to make for Fund 80 to make sure that we're not digging ourselves into a hole?
And I understand that there's only a certain amount that we need. But then my next part of that question is then how do we stack up with the others so that we're not, we not, may not be the cheapest, but we're the second cheapest out of 10? So that's what I want, that's what I'm concerned about.
Those are the, the sites that, in the additional one that I gave you with the 23 and 23 per day and the 43 per day. The other ones you have here that we were able to find comparables for, because there's, there's a couple others that do not have information available to us.
Part of the problem too is that we'd have to decide the median of what? The median of just RAP care, the median if they're there from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM? The median if they're there from the middle and only beginning? The median if they're only there from the beginning to the end? So there's, there is no one median. Now, we could calculate all three of those and then look for some combination. As you can see, like Site C as an example, $15 per day per RAP care, that's without a doubt the, the lowest cost for RAP care. But then it's right up actually above where we are when you look at the full day. So we, we could look at it a multiple, a multitude of ways. We wanted to provide you the range, not just the monetary range, but sort of the conceptual range. These are three different structures that are out there. We're trying to find something that fits right in the middle of all of them.
Yeah, I appreciate, there's a little bit of comparing apples to bananas to grapes and pears, so.
The other consideration that we always think about with school age care is many of the families that we serve are not necessarily the families who can afford a higher rate. So we're always cognizant of that as well, so that we make sure that we're, when we're pricing, that we provide a fee that the majority of families can afford to pay.
Now I saw hands up. Heather?
No, Gina, I guess I would just echo your thinking. When I first looked at this, you were saying it's within the range, but it, the optics, it doesn't, it doesn't look in the range. So I appreciate the explanation about all of these, all these factors. I think what I'm hearing you say is that we want to set fees that cover our costs, keep it as affordable as we can for our families, but don't put us at a competitive advantage with our, with our partners. And that, you know, that, I think you've looked at all the data, you've shared some of it with us. I mean, as long as we're doing those three things, then I think we're doing right by the program.
And Rob, you had a question?
Yep. So certainly this is going to be a, a good thing for Fund 80, certainly, should be anyway. I, I guess I'm looking for a couple of points of clarity. The, the first one being, when we talked about this last time, I think Heather asked a question about the impact to our partners. And I was a little surprised to see that we went from asking for administration to come back with, what's, what's the potential impact to our partners, to we're rolling this out? So that was a little bit of a surprise. So do we have any idea of what the impact's going to be as relates to student loss? I know that we signed agreements with all of our partners and then sent these emails out to our parents, which maybe it doesn't impact all of our partners adversely, but certainly some, you know, Bethel, Lutheran being case in point. Do we have any idea what the financial implications might be to these partners who have planned? And then we rolled this out.
Well, you know, I'm gonna take that real quick. So when we, we pitched this, the only way for us to know for sure what the interest is, is to roll it out. I mean, that's the only, that's the only way we can do it, otherwise, you know, people have to know, what is it going to cost? Where is it going to be? What is that going to look like? You know, if the board says, hey, we, we want to change this, we don't want to, want to expand, we can absolutely cut back on it. But I think the, the biggest issue with this is all the sites are very different. If you look at the history of how many kids we're serving in our sites versus the private sites, I mean, we're serving a very small amount. And we would anticipate that our, even with our wraparound care, we're actually going to serve, we'll serve fewer kids at our sites that will also need wraparound care than what we would, what we served last year at our sites with just 4K. So it's, it's not as though we're, we're seeing that, you know, that big shift. And, you know, I think there's, there was some misinformation out there that, you know, the district was calling all these 4K, potential 4K students and asking, you know, talking about our program and trying to recruit from other sites, and that wasn't the case. After the original 4K surveys went out, you know, the district felt, followed up on those that expressed interest in district programming. Not necessarily, you know, if they chose Bethel, we weren't calling them, we weren't calling kids that chose Bethel, we weren't calling kids and, and working through that. As far as the cost associated with it, we have the highest reimbursement rate than any other district in the state for our providers. And we pitched that back when we started this. And even though it does put pressure, you know, it does put pressure on the district, it still is a, a good thing for our partners because a lot of other districts don't, don't even provide half the amount of reimbursement rate that we're, that we're providing. So I think, you know, there's no way for us to know. You know, we've had a couple of sites that have had waiting lists and not been able to allow kids in. And, you know, I guess if this allows families to be able to plan and be able to have some level of wraparound care and do those things, and it may cause some of those sites maybe not to have as long of a waiting list or, or things like that. You know, that, I, I think providing that opportunity to kids is, and, and to families is going to be a big piece. But the financial impact, that's something that, you know, they'll have to communicate to us once we're all signed up and, and. once we're all signed up and, and ready to go. But it is a really fluid thing. 4K, as you saw in the numbers at the top of the page, are, they're fluid from year to year. I mean, they just, you know, we, luckily we were growing and then this year, obviously, we shrunk a little bit with, with COVID, which we kind of anticipated would. And I know, Dave, do you have our numbers going into next year, what we're anticipating? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, we're, not specifically. The last time we checked, we were getting really close to 200 and now we're doing the individual calls to find out where.
And that's not 200 district, that's, that's total, total community providers and, and things like that. And so our, our goal is not to offer this in every building or to try to put providers out of business. But if we have space and we have families that have a certain need and we can help meet that need, we, you know, we're, that's what we want to do. We don't believe we're getting families that are, let's say, at Bethel or at St. Pat's and have been doing that for the last three or four years. And then all of a sudden now it's being offered at our site and they're, they're switching. Not saying it can't happen, I'm just saying right now, it's, it's not what we believe is happening.
So chronologically, we signed agreements with our partners. We, then after they planned, they, then all these families received an email from the school district saying we're going to offer this. And the day that I shared the email that I got from Bethel with administration, it included that day, two students who had just changed their mind to go to a Hudson Sun. And so not, I think it's a poor assumption, especially during the time of COVID, that every partner has a waiting list.
No, and, and they don't always have a waiting list, but there are some that have had a waiting list. That provider specifically has had a long waiting list in past years for their daycare programming and things like that. And so I'm not quite understanding the, the chronological order of how this impacts them financially from a standpoint of if it's, they've hired a bunch of staff anticipating a certain amount of numbers and then all of a sudden the numbers aren't there. But it's just been our experience that we typically aren't hiring a ton of staff related to childcare. They're kind of like just-in-time hires. We usually don't hire in February for a staff member we need in September, except for our certified teaching staff. And, you know, and if they want to offer the program at all, they have to have the certified staff member.
And this gets back to, I guess, the genesis behind the initial conversation. You know, the board had asked, what would be the potential impact to our partners? And Lou have come back with a report or feedback after having conversations with our partners to alleviate this conversation. Looks like we simply just chose to implement.
Okay.
And again, I mean, whatever it's worth, I just want to make sure we're fair to our partners.
Absolutely.
And I think we've been more than, I think we've been more than fair to our partners with our reimbursements over the last four years. And, and I think that it's, we've been extremely fair with partners. When we talk about the amount of money that we're reimbursing private providers compared to other districts in the state.
One, one point of clarification, I appreciate the perspective, Rob. I, when, when we met with the providers, I asked two questions. I said, if wrap care costs are somewhere in the range, would that make you more comfortable? Unanimous agreement that yes, absolutely, that would. And the second is if we backed off on the total number of classrooms opened and this represents a reduction close to half of what it could have been when we said these are all the sites and, and classrooms that could be available, would that help out? And it was a unanimous yes on that. Not to say that there isn't going to be an impact, as Nick said, we can't determine what that impact would be, but this definitely mitigates that. And I, I, I believe that the providers felt heard and felt engaged in that conversation. Where we go next, obviously, you can provide direction and, and we can, we can shift gears if we need to. But this is, this is what we have at this point.
Any other questions, Carrie?
Yes, I would, I would suggest that, not to talk about historical fairness, we, we obviously have compensated our partners very well. I think just the optics of this, which, which I've shared with you, to extend these contracts in early to mid-January, which obviously partners are entering into in, in good faith, I would have assumed the district also was entering into in good faith. And then at the January 25th work session was when we first heard this proposal. And then the emails went out the next day to the, to the partners. And then just to learn that it, it's been acted upon. I would suggest that this, as soon as those partners could hear the specific numbers and that families could commit, there, there will be staffing decisions. It's not strictly, it's not a childcare decision, it's, it's teaching aides. And probably a lot of those partners have, have, have commitments from those folks. The, the likely impact because of COVID and just numbers would be that people will be fired. So it's not, I get the objective benefit to the district. I think it makes great sense, financial sense to do it. I, the only, my only question is the timing, that it, that it, we entered these contracts in January and we had no idea that two weeks later, we'd be wanting to do this for the next school year when, when we had commitments from all those folks.
Absolutely, that, that makes perfect sense. One thing, again, just to clarify, there actually isn't a financial benefit to the district necessarily with this. It's about a wash. When we would look at having to hire certified staff, we do believe that it provides a better level of service for families and for students. But it's actually not, this isn't necessarily financially driven. It's a better use of district resources, we would argue, because we have classroom spaces available. But even at, even at the rate that we reimburse at that $3,200 per student per year, there's not a, there's like about a wash. Now, depending on how it would all shake out, it could be a little bit one way or the other in terms of the, the net result at the end of the day. But not, this isn't really motivated by a cost savings.
I'm sorry, can you explain how, if we're, if we're reimbursing more than any other district in the state? If that's not in excess, how is that not beneficial for the district to retain that?
So there, there are various costs that go into, but if we just look at our average salary for a teacher at $3,200 per student per year, we would have to run ultra-efficient, like right up to the maximum number of students to get to the point of having that be a financial benefit. So it's just a function of how much we pay our staff and that $3,200. So yes, we reimburse at a, at a high rate. But compared to other areas of the state, our teacher compensation is actually pretty strong as well. So those two variables work in conjunction with one another. So it's, that reimbursement rate isn't designed just to match salary. There's other considerations because a site, as an example, may have to build out. We've had sites that have had to build classrooms or do some level of construction. So it's not just looking at teacher salary as the only variable.
Bob?
When we were talking about this in January, wasn't, wasn't a big factor, the flexibility for parents and families that could not maybe afford or, or that we would have some programming that would work better for families than they can get from our providers? And that, that would be adding families that might not be using our, our outside providers now? Wasn't that part of the attraction of this?
I'm, I'm not, I don't follow.
Obviously, our, our wrap care wouldn't be exactly like wrap care from one of our providers. There's, I mean, we, we have our own control, they control their programming. Wasn't, weren't we looking at some advantages to being more of a player in that?
Sure, yeah.
I mean, I'm, yeah, I mean, I'm not saying take business away from providers. I'm saying provide services for families that maybe wouldn't be going that way anyway, and now they are with us.
Yes, but absolutely that potential exists. And what, one of the advantages, it's what we hear from the schools that have 4K sites in them, that it creates a smooth transition, that Willow really appreciates the partnership between their kindergarten team and their 4K team. It allows for some collaboration and having a better understanding of what the needs are as the kids work through the system. Those are some of the less tangible benefits beyond the financial side of things.
Heather?
Can you, can you remind me, do we, for students that would be getting wrap care and then possibly before and/or after care? For students who are free and reduced lunch, is it also more affordable? I mean, is that part of the calculation? And perhaps the increased accessibility is that, I'm guessing most sites don't have something built in that might provide assistance to low-income families, but do, do we? Is that part of this or not? I get confused about this versus other places where there's a, an option there.
Yeah, and Tracy would be able to add specifics, but yes, we do. I, we can't say what other sites do. I don't know if they do, they, they may or they may not, I'm not certain what they would do for that.
And that, that's built into the financial model is an assumption that we would have some of that in our, in our program. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? So I guess to build on what Heather just asked, if we were to go to 25 and 33, when, and, and if we had that option for some kind of discount for people who were on, who might qualify for free or reduced lunch?
If we went up to 33 right now, a family who comes into school-age care for what, what the board already set for fees for next year and all day, all-day care for a family is $3,275.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So on a non-school day, when a family comes in, they're paying $3,275. So it, it doesn't make sense, in my opinion, to charge our 4K families more than we would charge our other families. The 31 is based on, I, I realize it's, it's slightly lower, but we're expecting these families to pay the, if they're using that before and after school care, they're paying the 31 Monday through Friday. So just as in summer, we give families who have to, who have multiple days, a slight break on fees. That's, that's what's factored in here. And like I said earlier, there are families who are going to want more flexibility than what we can provide here. And so the families who are going to want just two days a week, they're not going to choose this. They're going to go with one of the community providers that are going to provide them the flexibility that they want.
Okay.
And, and again, to, to the point, we need a minimum of 10 kids in the program to make this viable for us. And that may not be the case, we may not have 10.
Or we may only have 10 at one site.
Correct, correct.
In which case, and, you know, then we have to know what that is so that if we can't be viable, they have an opportunity then to go try to find care at other sites. All right, any other questions or comments? Any further comments specific about the fees or anything like that? All right, well, thanks for the report and the explanations. Hopefully you have a, the direction you're looking for.
I, I think, I think it would be important that we do come to some love. I, no, I don't, honestly, I'm not sure what the direction is. And I apologize that, th- this was not the intent. We had, there's no benefit to us, obviously, to circumvent the will of the board. That wasn't, that was definitely not the intent. So if we could have some direction of how you'd like us to go, that would be wonderful.
Or if you want us to add this to another meeting for an official vote, we can add it to another meeting for an official vote as well. And I think that's exactly what happened to us because even as I talked to Carrie about this, when she brought it up with me, I think a week or two ago, you know, we thought we were heading in the right direction, but then the feedback was maybe not. There was a misunderstanding. So I think, you know, we would want the board then, yeah, we can bring it to the board at the, we can put it on as an action item at the 26th meeting because it will be a special meeting because it's a reorganization meeting. And then have the board take an up or down vote so that way we know exactly the direction to go. So there's no miscommunication as to timeline or expectation. Good.
I, I think that, I mean, that would feel more comfortable. And I think, I appreciate you trying to summarize and give us A, B, and C because the other information is more complicated. But because so much of this is you wanting our backing, that we're comfortable with the rates not being unfair to providers, maybe to, to share what, what you have, even if it's a little bit complicated and not apples and apples. I mean, I think maybe that to see all of it might be helpful. I mean, I, I'm, on one hand, I'm really comfortable trusting that you've done that, but I'm also sensing this whole, we want to make sure you're comfortable with what we did. And with just three bullet points, that's, that's a hard thing to do, so I don't know.
Quite honestly, I think it goes beyond the wrap care prices. That, that's the easy, that, that, we could have that to you tomorrow morning, a full analysis of, of all the wrap care prices. We just did this to make it readable, honestly, because we thought it would be overwhelming to have a, the, every single point there. But you're right, I mean, i- it would be within that range, but we can, that's not a problem. The registration process becomes problematic in terms of postponing till the 26th. That, I mean, that it, it, that extends the time that families will be waiting and wondering. So that, that's, that's the other variable at play here. And again, I, I apologize for the confusion.
Ms. President?
Yes.
So if, to Carrie's point, if, if there is some financial implication to our partners, even if it's just one partner, it would be good for this board to understand what those implications are. You know, are they losing? I, I.
The, the problem with that, Rob, there's no report we can give you that would provide that information. We have the, by, if we, let's say a new, a new provider opened in town and they said, we want to partner with the district. We don't turn partners down. That would have an impact on all the other partners as well. So we can tell you there's a potential impact. I don't think there's any way that with the data we have, we'd be able to quantify that potential impact.
So I would, without knowing anything more than I do, I would suggest that these partners, based on the agreements we signed in January, likely made some assumptions and did some, some planning. And if what the district is doing adversely impacts that, it would be good for this, for the board, the next board to, to know humbly. And again, I, I'm just throwing that out because I would hate to adversely impact our partners.
At the same time, the word, we shouldn't be impacting the district and putting moralism on any of the faculty and lack of them. So I'm not saying that that would necessarily be the case, but I think we just need to make sure that we're providing the best opportunity for all families in our district. And, and that's really our responsibility, it's not to these partners. I think, again, from what I've heard tonight, we've been incredibly fair to our partners. And I think at, at this stage, from what I've been hearing, it's more about providing the opportunity and the equity as opposed to like saying, well, let's, because then why wouldn't we just kill any program at our schools and just provide everything back to our partners? So I, I think it's, I think it's worthy what you guys are looking into. I mean, you've had two schools, you went down to one, you're now looking at three, I mean, four, you're four. But I mean, again, it comes down to how many kids are being enrolled. Because you need to have at least a certain number for it to, to make sense.
Yeah, and some of that information, our partners are not going to give us. I mean, it's proprietary. They're not going to tell us, well, this is going to cost this much or this. I mean, this is part of the issue we have with the fees because it's, a lot of the fee structure we pulled, we pulled from what we could get online, you know, but most places aren't just willing to give you fees. And having small children, I remember what that was like when I was looking for daycares. They wouldn't give you the fee structure until you came in and toured the facility. And, and it was, you know, because they didn't want their fee structure out there on, on a lot of these things. And so anytime it's a public part, you know, public-private partnership, it, it does create a little bit of murky area because it, it's, you know, no different than, than any of our vendors that we work with. They always get a little nervous, you know, with fees and things like that. But we, like I said, we, we can delay things, it will put our, our parents potentially in a bind on, on some stuff. But I, I don't know if there's going to be any additional information that we're going to be able to provide you other than anecdotal partners saying, we think we're going to be down four kids because of this. Or we think we're going to be down five kids because of this. But I think it goes back to handle what Dave said is, if the daycare came to us tomorrow and said, we want to be a 4K partner, they could be a 4K partner going into next year, once we have the contract signed. And that could have an impact on all the other existing providers. And that would be after the partners have signed. Right, Sue, you have a question?
Well, I, I know I won't, if you vote on this at another meeting, I won't be involved, but I feel. But I feel like I have received adequate information. And also I, I did look at, I mean, I know they're not a partner, the Y isn't a partner, but there's something like $64. I think in that vicinity for school age care. So I, I think, you know, I, I feel good about the information that we've gotten.
And Carrie, your comment?
To Dave's point, I think delaying until the 26th is actually just hurting the families that need to make the decision and the partners who are awaiting those decisions. So I would, I didn't, I didn't think this was a vote tonight, but if that can be changed, I would suggest deciding it.
Well, I mean, it could be a non-binding, it could be a non-binding vote, just so we go around the horn and just get everybody's feedback on it.
Kind of a thumbs up, thumbs down sort of thing, yeah. I mean, if, Mr. President, if there's not much more information that can be provided and given the, the challenges that the delay will present, both for our district families and for our providers, then I, I would back away from this idea that we would wait two weeks if there's not much else to look at and say that we probably at this point just need to go and, and do the best we can with what's, what's already in motion.
The, the other thing you, we could consider would be the range of numbers that you would be comfortable with us having in our in-district sites. It's, it's a complex process because as one person expressed their interest, you have to make adjustments to every other site. So it's not, it's not, they don't just fill out a form and you plug them in and go. It's all very, it's a, it's a lot of individual decision-making, student by student, family by family. As it stands right now, we have the 95 families that have expressed interest. We know not all of them will end up in a 4K site. We won't have more than that. I don't know if that, that provides any level of comfort or if that is helpful information, but that's, that's the lay of the land.
And right now, how many do we have that we think want wrap care out of the 95?
It's, it's less than half.
So about, so about 45. And then of those 45.
We wouldn't be able to.
We wouldn't be able to offer it to all of them because some will say, I want wrap care and I want to be at Hudson Prairie. And we might say, we don't have enough kids at Hudson Prairie. So if you want to come to one of our sites, it's only going to be offered at Willa River and North Hudson. And they may say, well, if I can't be at Hudson Prairie and have wrap care there, then I'm just going to stay with X, Y, or Z, you know, places. And I think. Or they may only want it two days a week or three days a week and we have to provide it five days. Well, the way, what I recall, when this was introduced in January, was just that getting feedback from the board and I didn't see or hear any motion saying, administration, stop that, don't look into doing this. I recall that that's the direction, we said, that sounds, sounded like we're, now if we're stopping that, if we want to stop that, then I would think that that would take a formal vote. And I kind of agree with Heather, the timing is, if we're going to stop it, stop it now. So if there's a motion to get away from the direction that we're moving and that is doing this in a way that is trying to be, you know, fair to our partners and so forth, I guess I would entertain that motion and then that would give the administration what they want. And with Dave's, do you want to put some kind of limits on there as well, if there's numerical limits?
We, I mean, we certainly could. I mean, I will say, I, I, I think the confusion, one way we could, we could mitigate that confusion is obviously not everything goes to a formal vote at an action meeting. But when we look for consensus, I think it would be helpful just to recap that consensus so we have an understanding. Because what was happening is there were a lot of opinions being shared one way or the other. And is it, are you going with the last thing that was said or are we synthesizing? So I, I think that just, that murky the, the direction that, that we had and, and created the confusion. And again, apologize for, for moving in a direction that may not have been supported. If we, if we look at the current numbers again, looking at the no more than 45, half of, or maybe 47 would be half, but about 45 maximum that we would have in wrap care. If, any direction like that would be helpful. Any parameters you can provide would be helpful because we'll be able to structure the decision-making process to align to those parameters.
Looking for anybody that wants to, you know, give those parameters.
I just, I'm just looking at the numbers, you know, 233 and 20, 18 and 19 and 230 with one less provider in 2021, you know, I, I don't, I agree with Heather and Bruce, I think, and Carrie, but I don't think it's good to delay it. I don't think we're doing anything that's unreasonable to provide for our community and our kids. So I, I mean, three daycares could open up in six months, can't control that.
Or it could only end up at 200 kids, not 230, you know, and that's an impact as well. Again, we, we can't control that. It's just completely out of our hands. We could end up with 250 kids, you know, and there was, there was a boom there as well. I doubt it, I mean, based on where the members have been lately, but, but I mean, those things can happen out of our.
Yeah, and I'll get back to the, we had the agreements in January, then we rolled this out. And one of our partners shared with me, and I shared the documentation with administration, that they were going to be financially hurt because of this. And I'm assuming they're, they can't be the only one. You know, I'll defer to administration in this board. And if we're confident that that's not the case, that we're not hurting our, our partners, that's great. I'll defer to whatever decision this group decides.
Well, and we, we can't guarantee it. I mean, if, if you're looking for me or for Dave or for anybody to guarantee that somebody may not be adversely impacted or a partner, we, we can't guarantee that.
Well, not guaranteed, but you've had the conversations.
I believe Dave has had conversations with all the providers, all the providers have.
And if they're good.
Given the machinations that they like the direction where we've shrunk things down, we've limited choice, we've done those things and they felt comfortable about it.
Okay.
I don't have any reason to not believe that that's how they feel on this.
Okay.
Right, they, they, they appreciate the direction, they appreciate the adjustments we've made. That's not to say that they're, you know, they're ecstatic about having any expansion in the district. Certainly, I don't think that's the case, but I, I do think that they appreciate the adjustments we've made.
Well, can I get a motion to that would say that we, district administration has a guidance to move forward? Well, it would be, I mean, every, I can go around and put everybody just. Yeah, that's, move for the consensus then, I just need some kind of indication or else I'll just point at you and then you say, yes, go ahead.
Yes.
Yes, yes, so somebody has to say, this is the plan, I'm asking for consensus. All right, this side of the room's taken care of, how about this side of the room then? All right. All right, we've seemed to have consensus. All right.
Well, if you thought 4K was a fun conversation, let's talk instructional model now, next year. All right, so the instructional model for the 21-22 school year, you know, we started this meeting with a couple of points of pride with Zoe Field, Quiz Bowl, and just a recognition of a lot of the great stuff that's happening in the district. Our teachers, our families, and our kids have done an absolutely amazing job this year, dealing with the change, dealing with everything that goes into teaching and learning during the pandemic. But what we recognize is, it's, we need to continue to make those moves to get things back to normal. And we need to look at next year in a more sustainable way. IDL has been fantastic for families. It provided that necessary option for families to say, you know what? I'm not comfortable at this time being back at school. I get to make the choice that makes the most sense for me as a family. And I think as, this plan will reflect similar thinking in as much as choice is important. But at the same time, it's going to reflect a little bit more move to getting things back to what we would consider normal state of affairs, especially not having our teachers teach in two settings at the same time. That has been, they've, it's been a Herculean effort and they've done an outstanding job, but it's time to move away from that and that's what this proposal includes. So you'll see the two columns there, elementary and secondary, pretty significant differences between the way we would make this plan work at the elementary level versus a secondary level. I should also mention that this plan is part of our ESER response. So, you know, we've talked about ESER, those would be the COVID relief funds that are associated with elementary and secondary education. And this plan involves an investment to mitigate learning loss by creating a instructional model that works for all families. So at the secondary level, let's start with the high school, it's the easiest. At the high school, it's essentially business as normal because we already had a virtual option. So it would be opening up that virtual option to families that already had that available. The difference, the only real difference being, we went through a pretty specific process of working with families to come up with a, a flexible plan to meet the needs of students. In this model, if a family's making the choice to go virtual because of COVID, they wouldn't have that blended model back and forth. They'd be committing to a fully virtual program. We'll talk about the timelines and the, the timeline for commitment for each program. At the middle school, we can also offer a virtual program. We do it on a very limited basis. We don't have very many middle school students in the Hudson Virtual Academy. However, this would expand that potentially to meet that demand for families that would be looking for a virtual option at the middle school level. But delivered as we would typically deliver the, the virtual experience. Now, if we flip to the elementary side of the equation, very different approach. Right now, at the elementary level, in an IDL situation, obviously a student or a teacher would have their class, say it's their 25 third graders. They might have three at home, they're teaching virtually and the other 22 in the class. What this would, we would, in this plan, we create dedicated virtual sections. So we'd hire up to three elementary teachers, three is the number that we think would make sense based on the current level of interest in IDL and the current number of students that are still out on IDL. And then have those elementary teachers teach in grade bands. So it might be one teacher is covering grades K through two. So all the students in the district that are opting for virtual at grades K2 would have one teacher to teach them virtually. It would be a blend of synchronous and asynchronous instruction. Obviously, you couldn't have all those students online at the same time. There'd be assignments that they'd be doing with their family outside of that screen time. And then there would be specific math and literacy instruction that would be synchronous, but for shorter periods of time. When we look at that model at the elementary level, again, looking at those grade bands and looking at a very specific instructional program that offers some level of engagement with the, with the arts, but those would likely be more menu-based. So when we look at our specials, fine arts, and then also FIAID and music, likely menu-based, where it would be, these are the options that you have for this week. There would be some, there would be some level of like submitting work samples, but not real heavy. It would, it would definitely be focused on the core. We'd also look at, for a commitment up to the grading period, meaning we would have families say, I'm going to commit up to the first trimester at the elementary and middle school level and first semester at the high school level. Individual decisions for individual circumstances might fall out of those general guidelines, but that would be the general direction that we'd be looking at. The other thing that we would do to make sure we'd offer a smooth transition is students would still have assigned teachers. So if they go back, they go back into a classroom where some level of connection could already exist and we could balance that so we don't end up in a situation where, like all the teachers at, say, EP, or all the students at EP Rock in fourth grade were randomly assigned to one teacher and they returned from this virtual experience and we have too many kids in the class. So we would balance that out throughout the registration process, making sure that when they do return, things are aligned. All of these decisions, this entire plan reflects the work of Learning Support Services that combined effort of Student Services, Erin and her team, and then Teaching and Learning, meaning this, in, this is for all students all the time. So there would be individual considerations for students with IEPs. There would be support for students that receive gifted and talented services. So we'd look at offering a fully inclusive model that meets the needs of all students regardless of their individual needs. Again, we look for that commitment of the students for the grading period. Students that need to stay at home, whether it's an illness or it's a vacation or whatever. We would treat that like we have in the past, they wouldn't go on to IDL. We'd provide some resources and some general directions, but they wouldn't be logging on with their teachers. The toughest part of this IDL process is the ins and outs. So we really want to reduce or eliminate that in and out process, that's why we're looking for the longer commitment. We'll be engaging in specific planning to put together the actual program. This is just a rough skeleton of the plan. We're starting that actually very soon, really excited. This year, we launched our elementary department heads. We've always had, or for many years, had department heads at the high school and the middle school level. Department heads offer a lot of leadership and direction at the secondary level. We haven't had that same structure at the elementary, we launched that this year. This will be the first time that they're going to be engaging in a process where they're providing very specific feedback. So we make sure that the interest and the expertise of the teachers are included at all levels when we put together the plan. So that's what we're looking at. Oh, I should mention as well, there would be potentially, I talked about the three elementary teachers, also potential hiring for special ed because same thing, we, we couldn't have special education teachers be the only ones that would still be in an IDL situation with mixed virtual and onsite. And also a potential support position at the middle school, depending on the number of students because Sarah Engstrom-Wide is amazing, but her plate is full. We can't double the number of students that she would support directly without some level of additional support. And she's helped us put together this plan as well. Questions?
Sue.
So on the last item, the department heads at elementary, would that be grade or discipline areas like math and social studies and?
Great question, Sue, it's actually a combination of both. So we have K2, social studies, 3-5, ELA, math, music, art, they're all represented. So we have, it's a very broad group, but it's both a combination of grade bands and discipline.
Okay, and then just one more quick one. So for, since at elementary, they do have an identified elementary teacher in classroom. At the high school level, would that shift more to like advisory groups as kind of a home plate, so to speak?
So, yeah, they would be assigned an advisor, but as, when they're in the virtual experience, they wouldn't engage with advisory on a regular basis, they wouldn't be part of that until they returned to school. One of the reasons we're being a little bit flexible with this timeline, we have the general idea that you said to the grading period, we don't know at this point what the vaccination situation will look like for high school age students, middle school age students next year. So we don't want to have students lock into something and then we find that vaccines are widely available and they, we are forcing them to stay virtual, that obviously wouldn't be in anyone's interest. So that's, that's the way that all works.
Rob, you have a question?
So Dave, because this is funded with ESER money, you know, one-time money, this is, would this sunset then at the end of the 21-22 year?
Yeah, the, the, I mean, can't predict what the pandemic would do, but we certainly hope so.
That's the plan.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so ESER, ESER funds, although it's pretty straightforward, they do have certain things that they want to see. It can't just be used to plug gaps in your, I mean, that's not what the intent is. And so it is to try to provide flexible options for instruction and also, you know, trying to catch kids up and, and do some media things. And that's what we'll see, we'll go down to the action items as it were, the calendar, that's the thing that I talked about, the board, the board session. So this is just trying to make sure that we have a model movement board. We have to, we're, we're kind of trying to balance things because we can't afford to say, nope, it's going to be business as usual and not offering any type of virtual anything. And all of a sudden, we have two or 300 kids walk out of the district and open it over in a district and the money follows them off. But it also, we have to be able to say, you know, this, you know, we, we have to be able to balance, you know, we have to be able to balance some of these things. And, and so one of the things that I think Dave talked about a little bit. And, and so one of the things that I think Dave talked about a little bit is it's, it's been a pretty good experience, I think for the most part for, for families. And when we try to make the best out of the situation sometimes, and we become increasingly flexible, it becomes an appealing option and people don't ever want to let go. And so we're kind of having that, having that balance. That's why there are going to be some limitations, how long people have to be, you know, basically committing to a trimester or a semester. And you're committing to a long period of time because we just, we can't continue to do this ins and outs stuff. I mean, it's just, it's one, it's killing our staff. It's working, you know, it's great for this year, but it's, I think if we said as teachers, we're going to do the IDL the same way we did it this year. Next year, I think we'd have a lot more openings. And so, you know, we're hearing what staff is saying, you know, we're just, we're trying to get through in this year. And we're not a drop in school district. We're not a, you know, so I think that's, you know, that's things that we have to get back to. We have to kind of get back to, I mean, this is not a come when it's convenient for you type of thing. I mean, this is, there's an expectation from the school.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the reference to IDL. I mean, I think, I just want to reinforce how fortunate our district and our kids and families have been that our teachers did offer that synchronous IDL option. And I, I think a really important part of communicating this will be to help folks understand how different WVS is. So having had a child who gave WVS a shot and did not like it at all because of how much it relies on independent initiative. I mean, that, that really that, that synchronous versus, it's a, it's a big difference. And so I think for families to really understand and as much as possible, help them get a sense for what WVS is. It's a great option for many kids, but that it's really different from what we've offered. And I think that's going to be an important part of rolling this choice out to our families.
Absolutely. Yeah, when we work with the department heads, that's the sort of thing we'll be addressing. How do we communicate this out so people understand all the variables and complexities?
Questions about our plans moving forward as far as thoughts? Are we hitting the target? Are we thinking about where you guys were hoping we would be, some of the stuff? So our process is, you know, as we have building forums coming up on Wednesday and the following Wednesday is Dave will be explaining this to the individual buildings, you know, and basically we have a lot of people, I think, that logged on today. As soon as Tracy sent out the email that said, here's the board agenda with the links. We might've had more people clicking on this document than the personnel pack for the first time ever. So, so I think there'll be a lot of, you know, there may be some questions about this, but I think there's also going to be a sigh of relief. And I, I, it might slip my mind, Dave, did you talk about the Wednesdays at all? So Wednesdays, the early out Wednesdays will sunset at the end of this year. I mean, that's part of the, you know, the reason we did the early out Wednesdays is because of the IDL, the additional stress and everything that we did add on, on the teachers. But, you know, at the end of the year, those will sunset, we'll be very clear about that. You may hear from staff that say, no, we want to keep those, but, you know, that the intent of those was always around, how do we mitigate the level of impact IDL has on our teaching staff? It was not to have that be our new mode of operation. So just as an FYI, so we'll be letting people know that as well over the next forums.
So I'm curious related to that, and I'm sure the question some of our students will have is then are we returning to the late start Thursdays?
That's to be determined, yeah. Not ready to answer that one yet.
Right. So now, do you need anything more on, on that?
No, I think we have a very solid consensus as I looked around and people said they were happy with the direction we're heading.
Yeah, I'd like a point from Bruce though. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right. Should we take a 15 minute break before we do superintendent's report? Because how long it's going to be?
Oh, come on. All right, that's, that's hurtful, that's hurtful.
All right. We are, are we taking a break?
I was, I was being sarcastic totally.
The surroundings of where they sell them in that little fruit fruit cake shop.
Let's see. Just waiting for a quorum to sit once we. That's three sitting. Says the guy that just did an hour. We're back from break. Now turn it over to Superintendent. All right, COVID update. So just to give you a heads up, we're still motoring along. We're tracking, tracking numbers. We, we have had an uptick of cases in the district in the last few weeks. Still far, far fewer than we, we had back when we were really showing a lot of cases in November, December. But our cases, what we're seeing is obviously our cases are, are student related cases. We're not seeing like the staff cases that we were seeing for a semester. So we're continuing to monitor it. It's on our website. People can, can check and see every day. We've had some situations where it may look like there's a large number on a certain day and then we go and dig into the situation. It might be three or four family members that are all, you know, three siblings at the high school. Or we did have an issue with sleepovers. You know, we're trying to tell people, please refrain from that. You know, we had, it happened, I think at, at North Hudson, traced back quite a few of our cases to a couple of those and, and things like that. So really trying to push back on that. We are continuing the mask requirements, you know, indoors. Right now, the big concern is the variant that's in Minnesota. And what's interesting is when you look at the statewide map, you know, Minnesota and obviously the Twin Cities is more on fire than anywhere here, but you're seeing it kind of starting to spread into Western Wisconsin, which we hadn't had much of an issue before. So we're keeping an eye on that. We had a call with public health and just, I think the best thing we can do is, is keep the masks going. I think they have proven to be a, a pretty strong mitigation factor. I know we've had some people have reached out to the board, reached out to me personally. And I think we're trying to constantly strike a balance between looking for ways to reduce some of our mitigation strategies, but also not set ourselves back where we get ourselves, where we have so many cases where we end up having to, you know, change our instructional models. So, you know, as of right now, it seems to be a pretty, a pretty good strategy for us. We went away from the mask outside, which, you know, to give kids more of a break and things like that. So I think that's good. Plexiglass in the lunchrooms is staying up, but as we talked about, we're no longer replacing broken plexiglass. As we kind of start to wean ourselves off of that as well. And then classroom teachers are able to, as they're feeling more and more comfortable, start to pull plexiglass down in classrooms and things like that. Because really the plexiglass in classrooms was teacher preferences, we went through that, so.
This?
Maybe jumping ahead, sorry. What about like close contacts? And if two, if both kids are wearing masks and one, you know, student had it and the close contact, everyone was wearing masks. Are we still considering those close contacts or would we consider looking to change that? I mean, we, we know the statistics, we've heard the statistics, right? I mean, if both are wearing masks, the likelihood that it's going to be transmitted or transferred is pretty low. So I'm just curious if that's been in consideration. I'm totally fine with the masks and, you know, I think we should finish the year out that way. I, I, I think it'd be too risky to, you know, we, we could risk, you know, graduation and finals and everything else. So, but, you know, just curious about close contact rules.
So, you know, we, we did reduce our, our bubble for close contacts down to three feet instead of six feet as the CDC came out with their new guidance as far as what they felt was acceptable for schools. You know, our goal was to, to try that for a few weeks and see if that had any impact on our, our cases. You know, and then potentially look at revisiting, you know, the beginning of May and say, you know, if, if, if it's not having any impact on our cases, you know, would we then go to that next level? Which would be if both parties are in a mask, we wouldn't count them. But, you know, as of right now, we're, we're just not at a point to change it. The uptick in cases, like I said, luckily it hasn't necessarily been, it hasn't been, you know, related to school. A lot of it's been outside school activities and things like that. But, you know, our first uptick of cases, a lot of them came in as asymptomatic as they were getting tested to travel for spring break. And all of a sudden they're finding out they're positive. And then lately though, it seems like we've had a lot of symptomatic cases and it's been tied back to activities outside of the school day. And, and so I think right now, I, I think our, we're going to kind of take a wait and see approach. But we do want to, because close contacts, we are, you know, we had, we had a situation today where we had an individual that, you know, had come to school or a couple of individuals that come to school symptomatic. You know, then they tested positive and they ended up knocking out about 40, 40 close contacts. And, you know, it's, it's frustrating for parents, especially as we get closer to graduation and, and some of those other activities, AP testing, things along those lines. Which kind of leads me to a couple of other things we have coming up. So working with St. Croix County to potentially host a vaccine clinic at the high school for 16 and older with giving our, our kids a first priority. I think Tracy sent the email out today, St. Croix County needed to get an, went out to all high school families just to find out how many people would be interested in, in that vaccine for 16 and older. Because what we're seeing is the biggest spread, you know, with COVID right now is younger because a lot of the older population has been vaccinated, which would make sense. So continually looking to see how they can expand that. So that, that, that survey went out. It'd probably be either the last week of April or first week in May, when we'd be able to host that vaccination clinic at the high school site. Probably be, you know, late afternoon to early evening, we would open it. It'd be set up not only just for our high school kids, but also for high school students, age students in other St. Croix County schools. It just, Hudson tends to be the biggest district. That's why they had hosted here, but yet, you know, if, if a student from New Richmond wanted to come down at five o'clock or something like that to get the vaccine at that clinic, they could do that, so. It's the Pfizer vaccine.
Is the 16 requirement based upon the state?
Yeah, the 16 is based on the emergency use that the vaccine's been given by the FDA. So they can only do 16 and older. That's all it's approved for.
Not, not 15 and a half or?
Not 15 and a half, no, no. So, and, and really I know there's been some real promising trials. I think they're already in, in stage three trials or just reporting stage three trials for 12 to 15 year olds. So I think, you know, we'll, we'll have some data that way. But we're, I, we're in a pretty good spot in St. Croix County. When I talked to our health official day, there's still a high demand for the shots here. I think some of the more rural counties, they're starting to hit their point of, you know, trying to get more and more people in because there's not as high a demand, but anyway, we can, anyway, we can help them. Couple of other things, just to give you a heads up, you know, it was brought to our attention that we have a, a group of parents that are, are running a planning on running potentially like a private prom outside of the school district. And, you know, we did reach out, our high school principal reached out to them and, and just said, here are some of our concerns. You know, the, the reason that we, we recommended moving prom to, to June 5th and 6th or 6th and 7th, I can't remember which two days it was, was because the original date, April 24th, when you start to look at two weeks and, and windows and when people could be contagious or, or when you could start to have an outbreak, especially with new variant. The concern was that's right around AP testing time. It's right before graduation time. It's all these different things. And so, you know, there, there wasn't just a, you know, we didn't just look at moving prom just haphazardly. I mean, there was some rationale behind our, our, our reasoning. And so we did express that concern to the parent group. Again, we don't have any jurisdiction over them and, and what they want to do. But it is out there and it, it does have the potential to impact our, you know, what we have going on in the buildings. And so there's, there's not much we can do about that. All we can do is just express our, our concerns about it. So we do have, you know, we've had, you know, hundreds of kids sign up for the prom that's at, I think on the 5th and 6th of June. And so we'll be moving forward with that. But I just wanted to make sure you guys, I'm sure you've probably read about it if you're on Facebook or things like that. But we, you know, we addressed it. We shared our concerns and that's kind of where we, where we've left it. So. And then the last couple of things I have are a little bit off topic, but you know, I've never been known to get off topic. Just a heads up, planning commission meeting tomorrow night has to do with our conditional use permit for signage at the high school. So that's tomorrow night. If anybody would like to zoom into that or attend it, let me know and I can send you the links. And then also I thought what was interesting and somewhat, it's really off topic is I did talk with Congressman Zimmerman's office. They did have the Legislative Fiscal Bureau run the analysis of the statewide sales tax for infrastructure. And so that, that report's been run and they've gotten that back. And so I'm looking forward to getting a copy of that and be able to share it with the board. So that's promising, you know, that we're at least getting a movement, moving along. So that is the COVID update and also my two bird walk topics added on there.
Sue, you have a question?
Yes, Dr. Lett, I, I thought I saw opportunity for, to address the state finance committee. And one of them's close by, it's like maybe Menominee, is it? Yeah, I did that once, I think early on when I was on the board and it was in Ellsworth. So it wasn't very far to go. But, I mean, you know, usually you have to get there really early and then they give you one minute. So you better stand in front of a mirror with your, you know, egg timer on or something and practice. But it, it is meaningful to, it is, can have meaningful impact to the finance committee.
Yep, absolutely. That is, that is coming up. And I've been working with other area superintendents, we're trying to decide who's going to be the ones that are going to go do that since not every, you know, they don't have the time to let us all go speak. And so we've been trying to coordinate that effort. And, you know, Congressman Zimmerman, who also sits on joint finances, has been, you know, a great listening ear. And, and we've had a lot of conversations as well, which has really helped. So if I don't get the opportunity to do that, you know, he's always been open to discussion and conversation. And sitting on that committee really definitely tries to help us out with that, so. Anything else? All right, that's it.
Board, board results?
Board election results. So they are attached there. These are the certified results. I believe that Kiri came in and canvassed these herself this morning. And they've been certified by, with Tammy and Lori also, so that we made sure that they were, they were official. So the official results are posted. We will have, you know, the three board members that will, that won election, Kate Garza, Bob Bowman and Molly Powers. Those three will be sworn in on the 26th meeting. So that'd be two weeks from tonight. And then essentially what happens, they will then be the new board members up to, at that point. Our current board stays in place through the 25th. So should there be like an expulsion in the next two weeks? Should there be something that would require a special meeting? The current members of the board stay in place until the new members are sworn in on the 26th.
My favorite thing, expulsion.
Yeah, I can't think of a better way to, to end, running for the board is that. But I think, you know, we'll just continue to, continue to kind of keep you guys up to date on these different things. And we'll kind of go from there. And I know we already talked about, you know, with Sue and Bob leaving, or sorry, Sue and Rob leaving. Are you trying to say that was a Freudian slip? Come on. But you might wish after our, you know, you know, hours and hours of meetings, but, but no. So that is the election update.
All right, I entertain a motion now moving into consent agenda items and with the language and the expenditures. Rob's got his mask off, so.
I do, I'm set.
All right.
Move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,419,987.
Second.
Second, bye. Bruce, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda is approved. Do we have an announcement of some retirements?
We do, so, and actually there was a couple last month, so I want to make sure I go back to that. The March 8th board pack, Christine Larson, who has been a regular ed para for us for 16 years at EP Rock is retiring at the end of the school year. And then Cynthia Brinsco, North Hudson Special Ed Para, who has 22 years of service. So June 2nd is the date for our recognition banquet. So that's when we'll have the opportunity to celebrate all of these people. Then with respect to the ones that you just approved, we have Chris, the Don Grund custodian, actually at this building. You guys see her on occasion, eight years of service. Cause I'm looking at this. And then Christine Mattis, another regular ed para, North Hudson, 19 years of service. We have Sandy Peterson, Programs Administrative Assistant, basically Skyward Expert at the middle school. She'll be retiring after the three years with us. the three years with us. Uh, Diane, nutrition services lead at North Hudson, 24 years of service. And then Donna Stolman, a regular ed para at the middle school and also noon duty supervisor, um, seven years of service in the district. So again, June 2nd, it's looking at about six o'clock start time, um, Wednesday, June 2nd, where we'll be able to have the recognition banquet at the high school.
At the high school.
Yes. We'll be sending out invites, all that fun stuff coming up and trying to come up with some creative ideas to celebrate our staff and still do accomplish some of our, you know, social distancing initiatives.
Any questions for Andrea on that? All right. Moving on then to the 2021, 2022 health and dental insurance rates that were discussed at the last work session. Yep. Yes.
Second.
I'll give it to Sue. It's the last many, last meeting deference. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on, uh, the administration recommended increases of 3% on the health insurance and 0% for the dental. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Next up, we have select delegate to CISA, uh, number 11 annual convention, which is June 7th at 7:00. And, and I don't think you can stick to the two new people with this because they're not technically on the board yet. So, and they're here and they can see that you guys are trying to do this to them. One of five people here, here tonight. And, uh, I can't remember the last time it was anybody but Rob. Rob, have you done it like all six years? Yeah. You better fill us in before we start nominating people for it. So.
Yeah. So CISA is made up of what? 31, 32 districts? 39 districts. And so, uh, we meet in Turtle Lake for an annual convention to talk about CISA. And so there's a brief introduction as to what CISA 11 is, what they do for our districts, um, how they support us. And then they have typically two or three pieces of business that need to be accomplished. And then it basically pick a next year's date and then turns into social hour. So it's a good way to meet, uh, other board members from other school districts, find out what they're doing, build some relationships and it's an easy drive to Turtle Lake. So it's.
Yep. One hour away.
It has not been determined if it will be in person or virtual.
Could be virtual. A little tougher to socialize.
I would like to throw my name on, in my hat and there.
I'd like to nominate Bob.
Bob's been nominated by Bruce.
Second by, and I will accept that nomination if it, if it gets me out of being delegate for the state convention.
All right. All right. So we have a conditional acceptance of the nomination. All those in favor of nominating, uh, Bob, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Bob is elected. Good job, Bob. Good job, Bob. Remember, no one has short-term memory. He's off the hook for the state convention. Next up, student policy series. Uh, this is second reading. So this would be, uh, the third or fourth time that we've been discussing these. Uh, any changes, Eric?
There have not been any changes since, um, last time we met, um, on March 8th about these.
I would like to move approval of this miraculous update for the policy series beginning with 411.6.
Second.
All right. Motion by Sue, second by Bruce. All those in favor of the second reading of the student policy series, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and it's approved. Final on the action items is changes to the calendar year, um, related to the ESER, um, legislation. This is for the 2122 calendar year that is coming up. And Dave, why don't you just fill us in on those dates again?
Perfect. Yep. So real, real quickly, met with the calendar committee. Again, fantastic group. They, they get right into it. Um, this calendar has us adding four days, uh, two days dedicated to instruction, two dedicated, dedicated to professional learning, specifically looking at FastBridge, our new universal screener assessment. And, um, the specifics would have the first day of school moving from September 1st, backed two days to Monday, August 30th. Schedule professional learning days prior to that would all shift back then as well. The last day would be shifted forward two days from Tuesday, June 7th to Thursday, June 9th. We'd add professional learning days on October 18th and one on February 21st. And then shift one of the PD days, October 8th to December 22nd. This checks all those boxes we were talking about, about making sure we're not having a lot of short weeks and instead longer weekends, looking at Friday, Monday combos with day off and PD day and having it close to conferences on those weeks that are pretty brutal for teachers when they go through, um, the long nights and long days. Um, so that is the proposal for next year's calendar with the adjustments.
And, and just to clarify then with those two days that are circled in red, that are yellow in color, there is no student instruction that day?
That is correct. Yep. On the professional, yeah, those yellow teachers report for professional learning, but students do not.
Okay.
Seniors, seniors last day would be, be the third?
The third. Correct.
And all the other students would be the ninth?
Correct.
All right. Carrie?
I'm sorry. Did you say October 8th had been a day?
That was a professional learning day. So that would have been yellow.
Okay.
And then that shifted to December 22nd.
Okay.
The reason we did that is we, we had a couple back-to-back four-day weeks.
Yes.
There were three-day weekends. And so, you know, we tried to, like Dave said, tried to pair them on a Friday, Monday, so that it wasn't, if there were going to be two four-day weeks, it was separated by a four-day weekend for parents.
So we're looking at two long, uh, weekends, one in October and one in February.
Yes.
Correct.
All right.
I'll just, you know, I, I think they'll be appreciated then. Um, but come the end of the school year, um, you know, I just remember a time early on in, in my tenure here where we got to be so late in the summer that kids were concerned about jobs because kids that were getting out in other schools earlier, we're going to get jobs sooner because some cases they could be out two weeks later. I don't know what other districts are going to have for their situation, but I mean, it's like mid-June, you know? So I, if it, if it continues on like this, I think we'll probably have a pretty noisy community, um, or at least parent base that will be concerned about, you know, again, those older kids that could get jobs. And now, you know, it just takes a lot of time away from them that they could be working for those that want to work in the summer.
Yep. And, and I think the biggest shift is about six, seven years ago, the state went to a September 1st start date. And so you, you just, you can't, unless we, like what we did this year, we pulled a lot of our PD days out of the year. And even, even doing that, we tie them onto the front or the back end. And then you're absolutely right. We get, we get done, sometimes we'll get, boy, this is a long stretch between January 2nd and March 22nd, you know, with no, no long weekends. And then, like you said though, at the end of the year, people are like, boy, it would really been nice to be done about June 3rd, June 4th. So, but I think, you know, going back to what you guys gave Dave in, in the district, the administration guys on was, don't go into the next week and don't start the week prior. And so that's how we ended up with four days. Again, the, the financial impact of this would be covered using ESER funds. This is a one-time thing. Uh, it would involve Andrea doing a memo related to staff. And this would also be something that we'd be taking out on the administrative roadshow on Wednesday at the forums, explaining, explaining that process and what that looks like. Cause we'd be paying staff their period B M rate for the additional days and looking through that.
And what's the, uh, thinking again with that 21st? This is probably addressed last time we looked at this calendar, but we got that one professional day in January on a Friday instead of Martin Luther King Day.
Yes. And that was, we had quite a conversation about that and we do every year. Um, that 21st is semester day. That's when, so teachers will be doing their grading and they're planning for the next semester. So that's when, and that's when it lands. Um, when we, when I talked with the high school team, they felt strongly that having that date as close to semester time as possible is critical, but that's not really a statement on whether or not we should look at having MLK day as a day off. That would be a separate conversation. And, and honestly, I'll be curious to see if that's something that emerges as part of the equity audit.
Okay. But it's just interesting that moving the instruction up to August 30 puts the end of the semester on Jan- January 21st.
It, right. It didn't shift because we did two days first semester, two days second semester. So the, the split was exactly the same.
Got it. All right. Yes, Carrie.
Does this affect the 4K calendar at all?
The four, yeah, the 4K calendar would match this essentially, other than we do the, there's the, at the beginning, there's the delay. So 4K doesn't start right when the regular, but it would shift the same number of days.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Heather, second by Rob. Any further discussion? All those in favor of modifying the 2122 calendar as recommended by administration, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It's approved. I'll now entertain a motion pursuant to the language up to the period, not including the stuff in parentheses. So.
If you guys don't want it, I'll take it. Just move it along.
Nope. Bruce can have it.
All right. Pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985, parent one, parent C to discuss and take action if appropriate regarding the employment and performance evaluation data of public employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises of responsibility, parent consideration of certified and administrative staff, employment, resignation, retirement, and/or final notice of contract renewal. Second. Non-renewal.
All right. I heard Bob second it. So we have a motion, a second, and it calls for a roll call vote. Bowman.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Kattas.
Aye.
Logland. Whitaker.
Aye.
Johnson. Aye. The ayes have it. Motion is approved. We now will go into recess and then convene a closed session.